We'll go ahead and get the call meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation? And Pastor Ann Brandell from Love Incorporated, would you please come forward?
Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in America and in this beautiful city. The city council and the staff have great responsibility, and we thank you that you will give them wisdom in every decision that they make so that they can make it one, a decision that will bring peace and prosperity to our community, and we can thrive and work together for your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Councilman Slakka, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
With the Veterans Day coming up, just to remember our veterans, let's have the hearty pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Here.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Councilman Slakka?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Simmons?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Okay, and we are to public comment. Now, this will be public comment on any agenda item. So it's on agenda items only. Anyone having a comment or a question about an agenda item, please come forward.
First, Rick Steinmeier, I'd like to clarify what you mean by agenda items.
That's an item on the agenda.
If anything is...
Well, I wasn't being glib, I was being honest.
I've heard you say that so many times, but a lot of things aren't on the agenda, like zoning.
Exactly.
You know, some other things.
There you go.
It's hard to believe that a guy that runs for reelection thinks he's underpaid. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi.
Hey.
My name is Karen Laskin, I'm a teacher over there.
I'm gonna need you to talk into that because it's for the record and everything.
For the record?
Yes.
My name is Karen Laskin, I am a teacher at Benita Springs Prep and Fitness Academy. Down the street, we have our annual Holiday in the Park concert coming up on December 10th. We have the application in. I just wanted to thank you all for considering it and invite you. I know there's something Mr. Nelson may have to do instead, but you are all welcome to come and hear the kids sing and have a blast. On a side note, as mom, with two kids that have gone through the school system and through Benita Elementary, Benita Middle, and up into Estero High School, I just want to let you know that we're hoping that Benita gets their high school.
Okay, all right. We'll try to keep those comments. Snuck one in on me there.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan Barnett, I live at the Benita Beach Club. I'd like to make a few comments on chumming. First, I'm not opposed to fishing on Benita Beach. Ninety-eight percent of fishermen are great people. However, I am opposed to chumming and luring sharks into areas where people are swimming. I specifically would like to talk about the middle-of-the-night chummers. I live on the seventh floor, I'm an somniac. I'm often up from 2:00 to 4:00 a.m., enjoying the night breezes, listening to surf, and I see the boat out there, right off our point, 20 feet, 20 yards. They're about 20 minutes. People tell me they're chumming. The next day, I see families swimming there. Now, I'm not speaking for us at the BBC. We know that people chum out there. I'm very concerned about visitors, about renters, and specifically for this group, about the local citizens that use the beach access down the road. On the weekends, I see families out there, often Dad is fishing. I don't think he knows why the fishing is so good, but Mom and the kids are swimming there, where they've been chumming the night before. I ask you, thank you first of all for having the commission here. I ask that you and the commission do what you can. You know, I'm almost 80 years old, I love to hear the children laugh and play and to surf. Wouldn't it be tragic if one of them lost a leg? Please do what you can to protect the children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time on any agenda item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Don Thompson, I live on Kent Road and have lived in Benita Springs most of my life. I wanted to comment on item 12A, which is a possible charter amendment referendum. I understand and believe and from what I see, the mayor and you councilmen kind of treat this job like another full-time job, and I think you all do, and prior council and mayors have also, and I think you're way underpaid under our current charter. I encourage that the council do approve a referendum being held during the next election to consider the raising of the compensation for the mayor and the councilmen, to bring it up to where it's reasonable, because I don't think it is at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any agenda item, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Council, fellow Benetians, Jesse Purdon, District 2, for the record. Two small things. Number one, I would urge you to request the approval of the special events permit and co-sponsor for the Elite Paddleboard Race event at Lover's Key. Who doesn't love paddleboarding? If you haven't been, you're missing out on one of the greatest parks of Benita right now. It is, not only does it get you in great shape, but it's a fun activity, and it's kind of one of those things that is really, you know, you're going down the Imperial on a paddleboard, that's Benita, it's beautiful. Second, the annual permit for the Southwest Florida Veterinarian Specialists for the Bark in Riverside Park. A, I'm always pro-dog, I've been pro-dog before we had a dog park, so I would urge that you approve that as well. And then additionally, I want to say that the Riverfest was absolutely awesome. I think the staff did an excellent job. I saw so many people, and so many people who were just working hard, sweating, you know, in their fishing gear and things like that, and it was just, it was a great event. And then also, I wanted to last say, Carl Schwing, you are one hell of a centerfold. I don't know if you all saw the Naples Daily or not. Looked pretty good, my friend.
Well, I didn't, but now I'm glad I didn't.
No.
Thank you very much, Jesse. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Glad I missed that one.
Hi, Ron Pure, Benita Taxpayer Action Group, and you've got actually two things that relate to the charter, at least two. One is on the consent agenda that you folks will be addressing real soon, and then you've got a separate line item. And I hope that you'll mull this over in between the consent agenda and the charter item that you're going to be discussing, and the salaries of the council and so on. By the way, there's no question about the charter business and the salary business and what's been proposed has somehow reflects on your encouraging growth, because of course, under the formula that's offered in the soon-to-be-up-and-discussed charter review matter, growth puts more money in your pocket. It's a terrible, terrible idea. The consent agenda, you've got an item here where you're bumping some money over from some categories that have already been approved in the budget. Item 15110335 is what I'm referring to. I don't know what letter it is on the agenda. By the way, the green sheet was not online this weekend. Couldn't get it to review it thoroughly. It was off Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, not available with the particulars of those items that are being discussed tonight. One of the things that we've discussed many times over the years, or at least we brought it to your attention, was the concept of the city having a credit line, establishing a credit line, so that in the event of an emergency or an unforeseen piece of property, for example, that came down the pike and you guys wanted to consider purchasing it and wanted to move forward with it, you'd have an opportunity to go to the bank with which you've got a credit line established to get the money. You are carrying an enormous amount of reserves. It represents, I don't know, 50 or 60% of your operating budget. Looking at it one way, another way would be to consider it 35 or 40%. Either case is an enormous amount of money for you folks to have in your vault rather than us, the taxpayer, having in our pocket. Now, with respect to the impact fees that you're generating, that's also indicated on the green sheet. I understand how that works, and I also understand that the debt service expenditures that you'll incur this year are covered thoroughly. But getting back to the reserves, I hope that if you do discuss charter revision and establishing a charter review commission, by the way, not taking upon yourself to move forward with any new charter changes, that you would address the issue of giving us back a goodly part of the money that you folks carry in, again, your bank account. I thank you for now, thanks.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else this time on any agenda item, please come forward.
Hello, for the record, Kathy McGrath, on the consent agenda, item 7D. I'm very happy to see this on here, the signalization of Shangri-La and Imperial Parkway. It's needed, and I'm hoping that with this downtown revitalization, more and more people will find other ways to get home and around from point A to point B and C, and I think that'll be a big help, having a signal there. They can use Imperial Parkway. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item.
Hello, Greg DeWitt, your Assistant Chief here at Benita Springs Fire Department. I just urge the council to vote yes on item 7B, accepting the land purchase to help you guys out with the downtown redevelopment from the fire department. It passed unanimously on our board, so we urge you guys to go ahead with that. And anything else we can do, we're more than happy to help you with the downtown redevelopment. The other thing I want to speak on is item J, the approval of Born to Dance in the park. My daughter goes there, it's a great thing, she's been doing it for about three to four years now, and last year they had a good turnout, and we're hoping you guys approve it again this year, so the turnout. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Charlie Strader, Kent Road, Benita Springs. Personally, it's gratifying to see on the agenda tonight some discussion of our historic resources downtown. Lot of us in town are very excited about the potential, what can happen downtown in our redevelopment efforts, and the unique blend of the old and the new, to where people know when they drive down Old 41, this is Benita Springs, not some other city stuck along 41. Also, I need to pass on regrets from Rhonda Lawhan, President of the Benita Springs Historical Society. She could not be here tonight. Obviously, her and the Benita Springs Historical Society and many in town are very interested in the disposition of our historic resources, so we'll be very interested to hear that. And for those of us that care, the Dixie Moon, which is painted on the wall behind the mayor, there's also a video about that on the Benita Springs Historical Society's website of www.benitaspringshistoricalsociety.com. And it was interesting to hear about the vault. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on any agenda item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Alan Glazier. I wanted to speak about an historic resource, which would be the old water tower at the park. I'd like to encourage you all to preserve that, but I do not encourage you to do it as one of the bids was to spend to redo the whole thing. I think we have a resource there that needs to be preserved as what it is, which would mean maintenance of that. As I saw from the pictures of it, we have a good base there, which I'm sure needs some work. I don't know what the bottom of it is, as far as whether we have water in there, but I know the top needs to be replaced, but I think we could do that by fixing it and keeping water out of it, and then keep it to where it's not retaining water inside. Some way to preserve that, I'd like to see that done. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Anyone else on any agenda item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed with the proclamations and presentations. And our first one here is, Mary Robinson, are you here right now? Could you please come forward?
Hi. Good to see you. Come on up here. And this is a proclamation celebrating National American Indian Heritage Month, whereas the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas the Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, Ben Nelson, Jr., Mayor of the City of Benita Springs, do hereby proclaim November as the National American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Benita Springs, and urge all our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, please give a hurrah. And she's with the DAR. Would you like to say anything?
Just the Benita Beach Chap...
Hold on. Wait for your applause to diminish.
On behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution and Benita's Barefoot Beach Chapter, I want to thank you for signing this proclamation and honoring America's first people.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we would like to invite our friends from the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to come on forward here, and we're going to have, I think, a great presentation relative to shark-related concerns in our current regulations. Thank you so much for being here, and I mean, this is just incredible that you offered to volunteer to come here, and I really appreciate it. We all really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for having us. We're glad to be here to talk to you today about shark fishing. Shark fishing in Florida in particular. Um, didn't I? Oh, sure. My name's Nancy Sheridan, and I'm with the Division of Marine Fisheries Management.
Thank you.
So as most of you may know, sharks play a vital role in the marine ecosystems. They're apex predators and keystone species. They keep prey populations healthy and in proper proportion for their ecosystem. They're also of economical value recreationally and commercially as food. For example, over the last five years, 2010 to 2014, statewide commercial shark landings were roughly, were over 4.7 million pounds, with an estimated value of over $2.2 million. Additionally, NOAA Fisheries Services Division of Highly Migratory Species has identified Florida's coastal waters as essential fish habitat for many species of sharks. This means that the habitat in Florida waters is necessary for the sharks to carry out their life cycle. For example, pregnant females enter state waters to pup at known times of the year. Additionally, the critical nursery habit is often found in shallow state waters. Sharks are managed by multiple agencies along the coast. On the Atlantic coast, individual states manage sharks in their waters from shore to three miles offshore. However, their management is coordinated by the Atlantic State's Marine Fisheries Commission through the interstate, through an interstate fisheries management plan. On the Gulf of Mexico, Florida manages sharks from shore to nine miles offshore. And beyond state waters, NOAA Fisheries Division of Highly Migratory Species, or HMS, regulates sharks from state, from the state waters boundary to 200 miles offshore. HMS also regulates tunas, swordfish, and billfish. So shark fishing from shore, it's allowed in Florida. Anglers must have a recreational saltwater fishing license. And recognizably, you know, the public perception seems to be that, you know, fishing from shore alters shark behavior in nearshore waters, and creates a fear among the public that fishing from shore could increase the likelihood of shark attacks. Land-based anglers chum from shore and from fishing piers when targeting other species, including baitfish and snappers. Whereas shark anglers report that they rarely chum from shore as it is ineffective due to the current and wave action. So the chum that they're putting out in the water doesn't stay there. The currents run perpendicular to the shoreline, so the chum rides along with the current. In 2011, the commission received a request from the Indian River County Board of Commissioners to investigate whether or not it was appropriate to address chumming from the shore on a statewide basis. To follow up on the request, FWC staff gathered comments at public workshops on the practice of chumming and questioned whether it should be prohibited. At the workshops, most fishery participants commented that prohibiting chumming was unnecessary and would be difficult to enforce. They also claimed that the practice of chumming for sharks from shore was ineffective because you couldn't control where you are in relation to the chum, and was rarely practiced and therefore self-regulating. Also, staff examined information available from the International Shark Attack File and elsewhere, but because shark attacks are rare, and there's not much data on the practice of chumming from shore, no trend could be found that showed an increase in shark attacks associated with chumming from shore. So based on the lack of evidence that chumming creates a public hazard, input from fishers and the potential impacts to anglers targeting species other than sharks, ultimately the commission did not take action. Shark fishing in Florida, it's economically important to Florida. It's an exciting sport, and it draws participants from around the globe. There are opportunities to fish for shark here in Florida that just aren't found elsewhere. Our commission values access to shared resource for all user groups, and they recognize the public perception regarding safety issues. You know, we're aware of the concerns, and what we're doing now is using a non-regulatory approach to educate anglers and the public on shark smart fishing. It's actually kind of hard to say. So, so with the, with one goal of shark smart fishing is to maximize public safety. You know, let's, we use some common sense and be respectful. If swimmers or surfers are present, do not fish for sharks. If fishers are present, don't go out and swim. Anglers should avoid fishing near swimmers, anglers should not chum near swimmers. And also, if you're fishing from a pier or bridge, don't bring a large shark onto the pier or bridge. They don't have vertebrae, so their internal organs could be damaged. And then, cut the line as closest to the shark as possible. Okay. So another goal would be to minimize shark mortality. Use proper tackle, minimize fight and handling time, keep sharks in the water, minimize release time and avoid excessive picture posing, and use a de-hooking device when possible. So this effort goes toward achieving and maintaining healthy, sustainable shark populations and a stable marine ecosystem, and also utilizing proper tackle and handling and release ensures the safety of both the angler and the shark. And with that, Brent Winter is going to come up and talk about some more interesting things about sharks.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. Hello, Council. I'm Brent Winter. I'm a research scientist at the Fish and Wildlife Research Institute for the past 26 years. I did my master's research on sharks and have studied them, caught them. Oh, I can't talk to the audience?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. We just want to be sure that you're close into the mic so that...
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, I understand, okay. I'm just used to moving around. I apologize and no disrespect. Yeah. Well, anyway, I've got a sharky background, and I guess I'm here for comic relief tonight, but what I'm hoping to do is try to relieve some of your misconceptions or fears about Peter Benchley did a pretty good job with that in his book Jaws, and later the movie, and I think it's probably affected our generation more than any other, as far as the fears. I was growing up in Iowa when Jaws came out, and it scared me. But what scientists do is when we have fears and misconceptions, we look at data. That's what we need to do. We need to look at real data to see if our fears are actually, you know, founded in good, proper information. So that's what I'm going to try to do, is share some information with you that may hopefully shine some light on this topic for you. The fact of the matter is, is that shark attacks have been on the increase in recent decades throughout the world. This graph here shows from 1990 through about 2013, on average, there's about 60 attacks on a worldwide average, and in Florida, we're about 20, 21, somewhere around like that. The comforting thing is, is that fatalities due to shark attacks are right around 10% on a worldwide average, and in Florida, they're only 1%. So if you look at this trend, if I can figure out how to work my pointer, these blue and yellow bars are actually attacks and fatalities due to sharks, and you could see this alarming trend of increased attacks, and that might cause you a certain amount of discomfort. But if you look at this red line that goes along with it, it's population, human population. If you talk to any experts on sharks around the world, this is basically a tracking trend. So the more people, people are going in the water, the more people in the water, the more chances you have of someone interacting with a shark, or a jellyfish, or a stingray, or drowning, whatever it is. And so this is more, and remember this, it's more human behavior than shark behavior. Over this period of time, actually since about 1960s and 70s, most shark populations have plummeted to as much as, by 70 to 80% of their population at that time. So it's not a matter of more sharks in the water, or they're changing their diets, it's a matter of millions and millions of people are going into the water, and I know you see that here in your area with the beautiful beaches you have. So let's look a little bit deeper. If we look at the activities of user groups that are in the water in Florida, which of these groups do you think would spend the most time in the water? The surfers, right? These guys are out in the morning, they're spending hours and hours in what we call provocative behavior. So they're splashing with their hands, kicking with their feet, wiping out, falling into murky water where sharks are feeding naturally, okay? So you can see the bars from 70, 80, 90, and the 2000s, that activity of a human activity has the highest amount of shark bites, okay? Again, it's human behavior, not shark behavior, okay? The more time you spend in the water, the more likely you are to interact with the shark. If we compare this and look, and there's tons and tons of statistics, that you can make relative comparisons as far as risk, this is a study that was done throughout the US, it's a 10-year period. If you look at dog-related bites and fatalities during that 10-year period, there were 263 fatalities in the United States because of dogs. Sharks, 10. Let's look a little closer to home. Now, this is the state of Florida. Florida actually comprises a fairly large portion of worldwide attacks, okay, every year. The hotspots are in red. So we're not meeting in Volusia, Brevard, and Palm Beach, but over 60% of all the attacks since, since they've been recorded since the mid to late 1800s in this, what's called the International Shark Attack File, they comprise about 60% of all the attacks. And you could see in that whole time period, there's only been one fatality. Lee County, Lee and Charlotte County, where we're at, Lee County, you have had seven attacks. So this green area is kind of a neutral, very low area as far as attacks are concerned. This further supports, this whole area, this is a hotspot for surfers in the state of Florida, and tourists, as well as, you know, Daytona Beach and that whole area. So again, this is more of a matter of numbers of people in the water and the activity of those people, not necessarily that those areas have more sharks than Lee County, it's just a fact of... It's just a fact of human behavior, not shark behavior. Let's zoom in a little closer. I did a little research on Lee and Charlotte County. Back in 1920, in Charlotte County, this was like the first attack that occurred in your area and it was up near Inglewood. In Lee County itself, there's only been seven attacks, if you remember the previous slide that I showed. None of the attacks have been fatal, okay? And if you average this out since the records have been taken for shark attacks, it's about .05 bites per year over that time period. We've had three bites near and around Boca Grand. There's actually two right here, so three down at the south part of Sanibel and then one bite documented in the Benita Springs area, okay? What's that?
In the year 2000.
That was in 2000, yeah, I'm sorry. Each of these little thumb tacks I put on here has the month and the year that the bite occurred. Again, no fatalities and this is all that's been recorded since the mid 1800s, status quo. This is just zooming in a little bit for you guys, looking at Boca Grand, near the Lighthouse on the other end. Actually, this one's kind of ambiguous, the record wasn't that clear where it actually occurred. Okay, with that said, I did a little calculation where if you consider, let's just start at 1920 when the first bite occurred in your area, in Charlotte County, 1920, through 2014, that's 94 years, okay? 365 days a year. That's right around, and let's say there's a thousand people on the beach every single day, which is probably an overestimate in 1920, but it's a gross underestimate in the year 2014, 2013, you guys have thousands and thousands of people in the water every single day. If you do the math, that ends up to being like 34 million, 300,000 people that were in the water during that 94-year period, okay? You take the eight attacks that you had and it comes out to one bite, not a fatality, one bite and every 4.3 visitors to your beach. So that just is my take-home message as far as the relative risk as status quo. That's where you're at right now, one bite and about 4.3 million visitors. Thank you.
I was going to say one out of 4.3.
Not about 4.3, 4.3 million.
Run for your lives!
So that's all I have right now. I don't know if we're taking questions or however you want to do that.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Counsel? Thank you. Does he have any more presentation or is that it for everybody? You all good? And I'm going to just add, you had mentioned something about willing to stay maybe after the meeting. I don't know if you have time to do that in case anybody had any questions or anything or once you go outside, if anybody wanted to go in the lobby and ask you questions further, would you be willing to do that?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to answer questions out there.
Okay, so when we get done right here, where you could go outside, anybody wanted to talk to you further, they could talk to you, that'd be okay?
Sure.
Okay, good. Counsel, you have any questions?
Just, we know that as a city, we can't change any regulation regarding the shark fishing and the chumming. At this point in time, it is clear to me that there's no way that you have the data to support we shouldn't be doing chumming. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just, I was looking at that map. Does it have anything to do? It seems like it's higher on the East Coast, Atlantic Ocean, and a little bit lower numbers in the Gulf of Mexico, or does that not matter per se?
Well, I mean, yeah, that pattern holds true nearly every single year. Those three counties, Volusia, Brevard and, yeah, Palm Beach, thank you.
You've got the surfers in Daytona, New Smyrna Beach, Cocoa Beach, that seems to be the hotspot.
It is, yeah. And it's basically because of the number of visitors that they get and that's also, if you're a surfer, that is the surfing hotspot in the state because of Cape Canaveral and how the state bends and the types of waves and stuff. So you mix that with murky water, bait running up and down the shore and a healthy shark population and you're going to get, you know, shark bites. And it plays that way every single year that they've been recording statistics.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
I noticed during just a little bit of web surfing here that some communities, Marco Island sometimes, they'll pass regulations, municipal regulations that say no bloody bait, no this, no that. When you see something like that, do you characterize that as a, how would you characterize that as a kind of a feel-good notion for people or since the data doesn't show that or what is the usefulness of those kind of regulations?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the data definitely don't suggest that, you know, the way that people have been operating so far that there's a connection with that. Some of the studies I've read on provisioning, which is shark feeding, which is not legal in the state of Florida now, but some of the studies that have been done in the Bahamas and Florida and California and South Africa where they feed lots amount, I mean huge amounts to these sharks, these studies show that there's no increases in attacks in any of the adjacent areas and it's very rare that there's even any bites on people that are taking part in that. So any minimal chumming that's going on in a single spot and like Nancy said, it's, you know, dissipated in one tidal cycle, it's usually gone or less. It's more of a, like you say, a feel-good motion, it's not necessarily warranted by changing shark behavior. I definitely don't believe that one or two guys chumming a couple nights a week is going to make a mecca for sharks on the end of Little Hickory Island. It's just not going to happen.
Okay, all right. All right, and any other questions? Thank you very much for coming here tonight and it was really informative and anybody who wants to talk with you, I mean, they'll be glad to meet with you out there in the lobby there if anybody wants to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel.
Thank you very much. Everybody, please give them a half.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, Counsel, we're going to go on to the consent agenda and we've got, there's a lot of them on here, so take your time here. It is A through M and look at those carefully and if there is anything you would like to pull for now, let me know.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Was there's a motion, okay.
A.
Would you like to pull A?
And E.
A and E.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
Motion to approve the remainder.
And a second. And, okay, any other? No, roll call.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slackta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, Bill, item A.
Hey, can you give me the amount of road impact fees in dollars? Is that what's shown on the green sheet, $1,249,000?
Let me answer. For the record, Audrey Vance, City Attorney. That was in the annexation agreement that we entered into that WCI would receive with the annexation agreement for the annexation, certain impact fee credits for the road and that's the amount of dollars.
$1,200,000, okay. Thank you. I'll move to approve that one.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Slackta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, Bill, item E.
All right, E is in reference to the dogs. This is the second year we've been renting them, correct?
Not dogs.
No, the item E is approve the...
It's slices, it's the orange ones.
It's not the dogs.
It's the sculptures.
The sculptures, well, yeah, but aren't they?
No, these aren't dogs, these are different sculptures.
These are slices of fruit and...
Ah, gee.
They're orange.
Slices of heaven.
They are stacked orange slices in...
Which in most circumstances aren't dogs.
Okay.
For some reason...
There's also fish sticks.
Okay.
Over in River Park and yes, we did not want to buy them for the price they were asking for this year. We are asking to simply rent them for another year.
And this is the second year we're going to be doing it, right?
Correct, starting in January.
So we got what, $4,000 invested over two years? We will have if we approve this?
We will, but in the future year, the artist has talked about negotiating that using the renting price that we use towards that, but the Art and Public Places Board did not make that commitment to them at this time.
And are there any volunteer contributions coming in besides that to fund possible purchase?
These rental pieces right now are being funded out of the Art and Public Places line item.
Yeah, but there's also availability that if someone wants to volunteer to put some dollars up, they can do that.
Absolutely, and if we go to the discussion of wanting to purchase those, we would be more than welcome to accept donations from the neighboring folks who like to contribute towards that.
And does the owner still want $16,000 and $10,000?
That would be negotiated. That's not the feeling of the Art and Public Places Board to recommend those purchase prices.
Maybe he could give us a credit for the two years and...
That is what the chairman has been talking with them about, but we did not want to make that commitment at this time. Right now, we just wanted to renew the leases.
Just rent them another five years and then own them, right?
Yeah, right.
It's on layaway.
I made the motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slackta.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, onward and upward, we are to public comment on any city item. Any person wishing to speak at this time on any city item, please come forward. Look how polite Kathy is. Just go ahead, Rick, she's going to take her...
Dive in, Rick.
Okay. Hey, Rick Steinmer, I happened to be by the Laos Hotel and looked at the water tower and I saw that the roof was split open and that was before we approved the budget for the year. And these bids that they came up with are outrageous. If there's water holding, if it's holding water, why don't you get a hose and siphon it out? I mean, that would, that's not too hard. And I'm really disappointed that the maintenance on it for 15 years has not really been done. We need to tighten up on our maintenance programs throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
And the Historical Preservation Board, I was at their meeting and they're kind of willing to throw some money at this to get this done, to get it repaired. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, Cheryl James from Benita Bay, but I am speaking to you this evening as a member of the Board of the Friends of the Library of Benita Springs. We have received an email from a citizen and we sent the email on to the head librarian, but she didn't feel she could do anything. We didn't know what to do and so I volunteered to bring it to you all this evening. Our email reads, "Would you please pass this along to the library? As they must know, the access roads to the library have huge erosion holes at all the turns and someone or some car is going to be hurt. They should please get them filled and fixed." And it is signed by Mr. Jim Hughes. I don't know who.
Pardon me?
That's okay, go ahead.
So, I had to pass it on, I know you can't tell me anything now, but I want...
Well, thank you. I see all kinds of writing going on here, so I'm sure it's going to get taken care of.
Great, thank you, officer.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Fred Forbes, resident since 97. I'm here to talk about high school, but first to make sure that everybody knows that Hunters Ridge is not against schools and has supported it. Our general manager for years was the basketball coach of a high school and when he got out of doing that, the Fort Myers High School wanted to have him do it. Our head pro was the coach, I believe it was of the golf team of the Estero High School. And we freely and willingly donated the use of Hunters Ridge Country Club for the team to practice on. So I don't want to hear any more about that stuff. Now, secondly, there's a big problem when city, and I'm not, most of you didn't even know about this, but when somehow you interpret policy to where the city would encourage, for lack of a better word, seizing the public part of the street that Hunters Ridge has used for 30 years, that's poor policy. And I would hate to think that this city council would condone that. Another point, Hunters Ridge paid for with the approval of FDOT, the turn lane in front of Hunters Ridge, which if that scheme was approved, would turn it over to the Board of Education, but also there's a little deal, you're going to let Burnwood still have that first entrance off the road. Now, all that has to be done by city approval. Encouraging or saying that that was possible is not good policy. And it would be horrible to think if you do that for the school, you'd probably do it for Super Walmart. So that's wrong. The site is too small. The school site selection man did agree with me, there's not room for adequate parking on that site. So where are they going to go? First place they'll go is take over the lot at Publix. That's going to hurt existing businesses, business. The school buses going in and out, that's going to affect the people being able to shop at Publix and those businesses. To me, that's not good when you create that hardship. I will repeat again that what has gone on, and this is not, this is kind of a combination of two areas of blame, but we did not create this, but you've got 4,000 people roughly that are putting their time and attention and resources to stop, slow down or whatever it takes to slow this thing down and get it off that site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
My name is Jane Shaw and I'm a resident of Hunters Ridge, which is adjacent to the...
Excuse me, Jane, could you pull that microphone down a little bit so we, I want to be sure everyone hears you, okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'm, my name is Jane Shaw and I'm a resident at Hunters Ridge, which is adjacent to the site that is being considered by the Lee County Board of Education for a high school with a sports complex. On Monday, I attended a meeting regarding the impact of this proposed site on three major golf retirement communities in close proximity to this site. They are Hunters Ridge, Worthington and Quail West. The city manager spoke at length about the timeframe in which he became aware of the site selection and when the council would be involved in addressing the choice of site. When he was questioned about the suitability of the site by several residents of the three communities, and let me add, there were over 300 residents that were there, present at Worthington where we met. He recommended that many of the questions be addressed to the school board at their meeting, which was being held the next day. He emphasized that he first became aware of the use of the site for a proposed high school on October 1st and subsequently, there was a meeting held on October 8th. It was a meeting where a site plan with projections of buildings and fields were provided. Those in attendance was the city manager, assistant city manager, mayor, Florida Department of Transportation, Lee County Department of Transportation, to name a few. It was inferred to the 300-plus people in attendance that this was for informational purposes only. Well, to my surprise, I found out otherwise yesterday at the Lee County Board of Education meeting where Mr. Mark Mora, an executive under Dr. Atkins, the superintendent of school in Lee County spoke and gave an update about the high school LLL, which this proposed site is under. He referenced that the meeting held on October 8th was to get feedback from those in attendance as to the viability of this proposed site. This was different from what residents were led to believe at Monday's meeting. The meeting held on October 8th and attended by our official representatives never took into consideration the direct impact to Hunters Ridge specifically, where it was pointed out that the main entrance to Hunters Ridge for over 30 years was to be taken away and that the increase from the additional flow of traffic that will be created by 1,800 students attending the school, along with the existing community traffic, creates a concern for safety for all those that will be using the roads around this proposed site. There is going to be for these surrounding communities, noise pollution, light pollution from the stadium sports complex, and we need your support. And it's very important that our representatives be kept well-informed. With all due respect, these official representatives overlooked very important issues for these communities and its impact has put us into a critical situation according to Mr. Mark Mora. The school board only went forward because there was no resistance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Ron Puer, Benita Springs, and Tag. I just want to go over one thing about what I didn't expect you to pull, but I hope you're thinking about it nevertheless. The word appropriation is used in your green sheet document indicating that that was the amount the reserve fund was appropriated. Let me give you an idea of what the definition of appropriation means. It's an assumption by a person of the rights of an owner with the intention of permanently depriving the owner of the subject property. Theft, in other words. So if you're taking it out of our pocket to make life on Easy Street for yourselves, it's not appropriate. Getting up to the charter review business. I think you picked a bad time to talk about pay increases in light of the fact that a goodly part of this city is on Social Security and Social Security recipients this year, again, looking at a zero increase. And we've had more of those in the recent past than we've ever had in... Since the inception of Social Security. It should not be go overlooked that you folks also receive an insurance, a health insurance package. It is out there. It is available. And I think in the past it has been abused by certain members, former members of the council, for whatever reason. Certain things don't make sense, but these are highly expensive insurance premiums that we pay on your behalf. You also have a pension plan. Other things that the growth or the population is mentioned as being 45,000 currently, I don't think it's any secret that you folks and your responsibility that you have to those people that live in private communities whittle down considerably that population in terms of where your responsibilities lie. You have very little to do with what goes on in private communities and represents about 60 or 70% of the overall community's population. If you were to go forward with a charter review, and I think that that is an unbelievable notion that you ought to be able to do this in the first place. This is our constitution. It is the city's constitution. And for you to be able to do that upon yourselves without any input from committees, commissions, or whatever that you've appointed in the past is not a very, very good idea. And it's not open thinking, and it's not the kind of thing I believe many people would buy into. Though you have the right, unfortunately, to vote in favor of tweaking that constitution. If you were to go move forward, I'd hope you'd leave the door open for the Taxpayer Action Group to once and for all have a showdown with the city if you're gonna mount something in March. And let's go forward and tweak it completely and open the door to a taxpayer bill of rights, which we could submit to you. And you could mount that as well. And that would be, I think, a boon to the process that we would oppose your taking on upon yourselves in the first place, but it would certainly be a nice addition if you were to entertain the thought of mounting some questions in March. But again, I think hopefully you will appoint a body, a deliberative body, to mull over and to adopt things that are in the best interest of the city. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
For the record, my name is Don Huprich. I'm the general manager at Hunter's Ridge Country Club. Just want to talk about the proposed high school site just real quickly. Two days ago, at Worthington Country Club, the city staff gave a great presentation. We appreciated their sharing their information with us. What was disturbing was the site plan that they handed out, which showed the elimination of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard. Hunter's Ridge Country Club is a development that has started back in 1986. Hunter's Ridge Boulevard is the only road that is the access in and out of the community. Starting... I've been at Hunter's Ridge for 25 years. Starting in the mid-1990s, we started working with Lee County, making improvements to Hunter's Ridge Boulevard. In 1999, the community spent over $50,000 to put in a turn lane on Benita Beach Road. Those were funds spent by the Hunter's Ridge community. Over the years, we have continued to make improvements to additional medians in the roadway, additional landscaping, irrigation systems. Over the years, the Hunter's Ridge community has put enormous amount of money into Hunter's Ridge Boulevard. And it was very disturbing to see that the proposed site showed the elimination of that road. We're asking for your help. As our elected representatives, we're asking that you please do not allow this to happen. For us to lose our main entrance into our community would be very, very damaging. But secondly, this proposed high school site is not compatible. You have three beautiful golf and country club communities. Hunter's Ridge has been there for 30 years. Worthington Country Club has been there for almost 30 years. Quail West has been there for over 20 years. These are beautiful communities that the residents are very, very proud of, and this site is just not compatible with the surrounding uses. Yesterday, at the meeting with the Lee County School Board, Mark Mora, who is the Director of Planning and Growth, stated himself that this is not an ideal site for a high school. Again, this is where we're asking for your help. Let's all together please try to find the appropriate site for the high school. As Mr. Forbes indicated, I'm the gentleman who was the head basketball coach at Barron Cuyer High School for many years. I was also the head cross-country coach for many years. I love kids. I'll do whatever I can. But I also, too, want to comment on the generosity of the residents of Hunter's Ridge. And I stated, being a cross-country coach, I'm also a marathon runner, and I can tell you that over the last six years, every year, we have a couple of fundraisers at Hunter's Ridge where the residents support my running to raise money for local charities. And just to let you know, this year, I have another run in 10 days. This will be the sixth year where we will have raised over $100,000 for local charities here in Benita Springs. I'm proud of our residents, proud of our people. We're asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
I gotta lower that. Mr. Mayor, Council, fellow Benetians, Jesse Purdon, District 2 for the record. A couple of things. Number one, I wasn't even gonna talk on the site location. However, this is a thought, and I don't know if it's even something that we can do, or if it's an option. So forgive me if I'm completely off base. Site location is allowing the city to vote on the site location if we get it down to an option. Let the people of Benita Springs choose where the high school's gonna go, as opposed to us fighting about this for the next little bit here. Just a question. I don't know if it's possible or not. I'm just putting the question out there. As far as the Sharks go, so I'll step back from that. And I will say, like, I'm very... We need a high school. Everybody knows we need a high school. I am probably one of the folks in my mid-30s area of life, and I know that 100%, I want my kids to go to high school in Benita Springs. It's a very, very important thing. I don't think anyone argues that. I think the problem is, we want to hear, we don't want to hear "my backyard" situation going on. That's fine. Can we get it down to two sites and let the people decide? If we could do that, I think everybody wins. Number one. Number two, as far as the Sharks go, I'm very appreciative of them coming out here. Those statistics, I feel a lot less scared than I did prior to coming into the meeting. I was potentially okay with the idea of a city ordinance on it. After hearing the presentation, I kind of go back to my initial thought on how I think of anything in regards to ordinances from the city. The idea of overregulation is not something I'm a fan of, ever. It's guaranteed in the Florida State Constitution that they can do this. And furthermore, the regulatory board that would be overseeing these supposed violations that we might have work for the state, and they deal with state laws. If it's not a state law, they don't have to enforce it. So are we doing an action to do an action? Because if we are, that's not what we're supposed to be doing. And I would think that that would be a bad idea. Next, north half of Community Hall. In the green sheet, Audrey, you say that there are restrictions on the zoning. What are they? I don't know exactly. What could we put there? What could we not put there? Those are kind of some interesting things I'd like to know so that we could kind of maybe establish and get input from the community on what we might want there. And then last, the water tower. Number one, I think, like, we might have been going at it for nine months, but the reality of the situation is $28,000 is too much, and I feel. I don't... I'm not a water tower specialist, but if you look at the pictures, it seems crazy to me. We're not doing anything structurally with the bottom. We're dealing with the top. I think that we could get some more quotes on that. $28,000 seems like a lot. And it says on the green sheet also that it's a liability issue. What specifically is the liability issue? And I'm not being slick. I'm serious. What is the liability issue? If the structure itself isn't moving and we're dealing with the top, what puts us in a liability-type situation? And then, last but not least, if it's not budgeted, even though it's only $28,000, the point isn't to me that it's $28,000. The point is to me that it's not budgeted. It says in the green sheet that we can get that money from somewhere. That's far too vague for me. Where does that money come from? How do we pay for it? And what is the reason that it has to be done? Those are the questions I have, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Richard Decost and I live at Hunter's Ridge. I won't repeat some of the things that have been discussed tonight, but I will say this. You'll find most members at Hunter's Ridge are very pleased with the idea of having a new high school in Benita Springs. However, equally important, we feel, is that the high school needs to be placed in the right spot. We don't think in front of Hunter's Ridge is the right spot, and it has nothing to do with "not my backyard" philosophy. One thing I would like to... As a comment, I would make that. And then, as a second point, something that you've heard is the traffic that that area of Benita Beach Road will experience. I think you're all aware that the traffic is increasing on that road. It's increasing not only from Hunter's Ridge, but also from Worthington, as well as the growth that Quail West will still experience. We have over 5,500 homes that will be built that are already in the works, in the plans. On top of that, by 2017, I think the year is right, we'll see Logan Boulevard break through to Benita Beach Road. And then, not the least of which, are two developments down the road, as well as Benita National. So you will see a lot of traffic. Some estimate far more than 15,000 vehicles in the near future that Benita Beach will... Benita Beach Road will see. So it's important that the traffic considerations and the congestion that will result is looked at by FDOT. I don't know if that's been done at this point, but I would be very interested in knowing more about that, as I'm sure you will. The addition of the new high school and the traffic that it will create will add more traffic to that particular area, and we think traffic and the safety associated with the additional vehicles will be a major issue and a major concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Hello. For the record, Kathy McGrath, and let me lighten up the situation a little bit. I want to start off with Riverfest. What can I say about it? Staff did a fantastic job getting all the information out. No one had a problem to park. I didn't hear one complaint all day. Stuff for the kids, the petting zoo, the pony rides, the hay rides, the pumpkin patch, the entertainment, the fish fry, from the very beginning to the very end. It was just a perfect day. And I do want to say something about what I consider the unsung heroes, and that's our Parks and Recreation gang. Oh, my gosh. I was there from 10:00 in the morning until almost 9:00 at night. And yes, that's their job, but you know what? They go way above and beyond. They are fantastic. Next, Film Fest tomorrow night's the gala at the Prado. Tickets are $15. There's gonna be a wonderful red carpet reception, and we have 33 entries this year. And the tickets are only available either at the box office or online. And I'm sorry, I don't have the Fandango www site, but you can call the Prado. And also, Mark Clement there is on November 14th. He is going to, from 8:00 in the morning till noon, for $5, show all of the films. So come on out and join us. Okay. Next is the upcoming Boat Parade. I talked to Adam Botana today, and Rotary is once again putting it on, yes. And once again, the Imperial Conservancy is making a nice donation to help them along. And Adam told me that, you know, last year, they changed the route a little bit and went back to starting at Big Hickory. And it's just too much for all the boats coming through Intrepid Waters and the bays. So they're back to beginning at the Fish House. The date is December 12th. They will be leaving the Fish House at 5:30, making their way up the river to the power lines where they'll turn around. And let me remind you again, folks, everyone likes to sit along the river and go to River Park and everywhere and have a good time and watch all the boats go by. But if nobody enters, there's nothing to watch. So come on, guys. Get your boats out there, how big, how small. Get your thinking caps on and decorate up. Next, what I'd like to tell you, some of you already know, our Brenda Brooks from Crew is participating this year in the Ironman Triathlon, I think it's called, at Panama City Beach. It's this coming Saturday. And I emailed her yesterday to congratulate her. She said she was on her way and she was just a bundle of nerves. She has been training for a long time for this, so put her in your thoughts. And I think that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Okay, the guy's back from Maine and he's gonna talk. Ben Herschinson.
Hey, welcome home.
Welcome home. Welcome home. I don't know where... This is gonna be the high school. I don't know where the high school should go. I have to admit, a few years ago, I was not a strong supporter of it, but do a little research and you find out. I don't know whether our kids are going to Estero. That's probably, what, seven or eight miles away. And south Fort Myers, it's gotta be probably 15. So everybody says we need the high school. And we do. I don't know what the details are, but there has to be a timetable where you gotta fish or cut bait. And I don't know what that is, but I would urge the council, do whatever has to be done. We need the high school. Our kids... We're gonna be a community of 50,000 people. I don't want to see kids out there in the pitch black in the morning waiting for a bus. Come on, this is the modern times. We're a city now. We're not a small town. So I don't know where it should go. Gosh, I live in the old 41 area. Put there. I don't care. I want to see the primary focus should be, get the high school, do what has to be done, and do it before we hopefully... I hope there's no chance of us losing it because we're kind of slow. I don't agree there should be a plebiscite in every decision. You folks are representative of the entire city. That's what elections are all about. So you know what you have to do and work with the school people and find a location. And with all due respect to those who say, "Let's hear what people want." That's what you do. You make tough decisions. So please, do what has to be done.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else this time? Okay. And before we move on, Carl, in regards to this meeting on October 8th, would you like to kind of respond just a little bit about that? I just want to be sure that there's some clarity there so far as your interaction with the school board staff. I mean, this... There was a statement made that there was no resistance from staff, or that they, without the staff input, that's what encouraged them to do it. And would you explain a little bit about that staff meeting?
Sure.
Especially the part about the mayor not being there? Could you please?
Okay.
Was he there, that guy?
The mayor was not in attendance at that meeting.
Okay. Well, just curious.
This was a meeting that was held...
Look alike.
For... This was a meeting that was held for staff members of various organizations. One, there were multiple members of the school board's staff there. There was myself. I don't believe the assistant city manager was there, so John was not there. We did have Arlene Hunter there. We had members of our planning staff there. Some of the members of the school board staff were planners themselves. Mr. Mora was there. Mr. Schnell was there from the school board. We also had the city attorney there. We also had representatives from the Florida Department of Transportation, as well as the Lee County Department of Transportation. And I think generally, that covers just about everybody who was there. So this was staff only. I will repeat the statement I made two nights ago, all right? No member of the elected body of this city has been involved in this process, all right? And that includes being present at the October 8th meeting. And that includes being present at the October 8th meeting. The October 8th meeting was to provide information to all of those groups by the school board. For the first time, the school board laid out a proposed site plan, which has now been fully distributed, as well as the property, the size of the property that they're going to be looking at, the statistics in terms of students, and cars, and buses, how they plan to come in, how they plan to come out, to say that there was no resistance. And I was not at the meeting last night, but that's not accurate. We expressed, as I indicated two nights ago, serious concerns about traffic, noise, and lights, okay, to the neighbors, which is Hunter's Ridge. So there was discussion, as I indicated two nights ago, about the possibility of another stoplight on Benito Beach Road, out one of the exits of the already existing commercial property that's there. That would prevent having to put as many buses and cars down on the south side of Benito Beach Road on Benita Grand to go in the side there, which would lessen any impact to Quail's West, to that side of Hunter's Ridge, as well as Worthington. So those are the statements that were made. I was very clear about all that, so I'm not sure where the miscommunication occurred. The school board knows we have concerns, and I will tell you that the school board is going to be reaching out to the community on November 9th, at a meeting much like we had two nights ago, where their staff is going to be in front of the residents, and talking about the project, and looking for opportunities to collaborate and resolve some of the concerns that they have.
And I know we shouldn't drill down too deep here, but, you know, I think it's important that if people have specific fears about specific issues, well, you can, we can talk about that. And so far as the access that everyone's worried about, I believe, from what I've learned in the last couple of days, that those are issues that can be resolved, that they're looking forward to talking with the residents there to figure out how they can give them as good, if not better, access, whether it's there, or whether it's through some different type of angle through there, or something like that, because for that road, it is pretty close to the interchange itself, and so they're thinking that maybe they can give the people of Hunter's Ridge better access just by moving it a little bit. So I think that I'm just, want to encourage everyone to talk with each other about this. It may not be the right site, it may not, it may go down in flames. We may never get a high school in Benita Springs. I would hate to see that. But then again, until we really vet all these issues that are heaping up here, until we vet each one and see if there's a way that everybody can, maybe there's a way that the community can benefit from, you know, from a change in the way it is, and benefit because there's no way to get a traffic light in the place where it is. It's too close. So maybe by moving that down, or away from the interchange a little bit, maybe there's something that will benefit anybody. So I would just encourage everybody, and I just wanted to bring that up because I, staff, I think, has conducted itself very well here, and the school board staff. Forget about the politicians here, the school board staff and the city staff has conducted themselves really well in this regard, and I look forward to them doing the presentations for the Hunter's Ridge people and talking with you. I think that they're really good, reasonable people, and hopefully, we'll work something out on some piece of property. That's it.
Is this the time to have a conversation about this?
Sure, yeah, if you want.
Well, yeah, I think it's important for people to understand that everybody on this council is interested in a high school and want to make sure it's in the proper place, but it's certainly made us look like we weren't a unified council when several of our council members attended a meeting I didn't know about until I read it in the paper, frankly. And I can certainly see why Councilman Longcard would attend a meeting like that, because that's his district. But I don't know how some of the people got invited to that meeting on council, elected officials, and some of us didn't, because it leaves an impression, a poor impression, that this council is divided, and I don't think we are, in terms of who wants a high school and who doesn't. So, you know, how did this all come about?
I don't know how the invitations were handed out, but I did attend, once I was invited. I think you were there, Mike, right? And I know Bill was there, and there were several hundred people there. So I don't know how the invitations were handed out.
How did you get an invitation?
What's that?
How did you?
I heard about the meeting, so out I went. Not at an invitation, but I heard it was happening. And I heard, I met with the school board, too, and I heard about the meeting of them coming down here.
Well, I've been involved
They knew about it.
I've been involved with this education system in this city for 20 years.
Yeah.
From kindergarten to university, holding board positions and leadership positions. And I didn't know about it. I mean, nobody, I don't know how you hear about these things particularly, unless somebody tells you. So, did somebody tell you this, or did, I mean, it didn't just come out of the air, because it wasn't on TV or paper?
Right, right. I don't know if anything was printed or not, but I got a phone call, I got a message, and out I went.
Well, yeah, phone call. I didn't get a phone call, did you get a phone call?
I didn't see anything in writing, no. I didn't see anything in writing at all.
Did you get a phone call, Mr. Mayor? So all my point is
Got a lot of emails.
Well, yeah, but nobody said
They weren't exactly invitations. Well, one of them was an invitation, but not for that.
Well, my point is, you know, if we're going to have
I think your daughter was there. I think she knew about it, somehow.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah.
She lives in Hunter's Ridge.
She was there, I had to say hello. I hadn't seen her for quite a while.
Ask her about, Steve, I don't know. I mean, but I, you know
My point is, my point is
I'm sorry you weren't invited, but that's not my fault.
I'm not imposing that it's your fault. I'm asking if we're going to have a public meeting, and some of us are going to be there, some of us aren't, it makes us look like we're not in a unified force. So if, I would ask, I guess, if somebody knows about it, city manager, I don't know.
Well, and I think that's a good, the least we can do at this point here, Steve, is a good point, because what we need to do is that we're all interested in this issue, and we're all interested in a resolutionist in this issue, and the fact that some of us weren't there wasn't because we weren't interested, it's because
Well, that's my point.
We didn't get invited.
It leaves an impression with Hunter's Ridge community and everybody on the east side of the city that, hey, Martin and McIntosh and whoever else wasn't there aren't interested. Well, that's not true. You know, we want a high school, and we want to figure out the best place for it. And I will tell you that since yesterday's meeting with the school board, the regular meeting, I met with the president of the school board this morning, and I said, you know, this is not going to fly unless we figure out a way to get this done correctly in this city, and we need to take responsibility to help you get it done. And she reiterated to me and said that last night, she made it very clear that no high school was going into that Hunter's Ridge position, that point, until all the points were mitigated, until every issue was resolved by the school board. And I don't mean to take our city attorney's position, because she's the ones, the legal counsel here. But clearly, when the state of Florida decided how the kids in Florida were going to be educated, they gave the accountability and the authority to the school board's systems for site selection, curriculum discussion, and teacher selection. So, yeah, the school board's going to make that final decision. We have the right to help them understand how the best place is for our citizens, but ultimately, it's in the hands of the school board. That's where you need to put your efforts, that's where you need to make sure people understand where you think this ought to be. And I got to tell you, if you've picked two sites and asked people to make a decision on it, you're going to end up with one that half of those people, whoever are voting, are not going to like where it is. So the school board, this body, the elected officials, and folks out there, you may hear some people say, "Oh, we're going to fix this." That's political rhetoric. It's got to be the unified force of the school board that makes that final decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Ben, maybe I can make an explanation about how the meeting came about. I was at an external affairs committee meeting, which I serve on at Worthington Country Club, and we had a good crowd there, and there were some concerns about information that was out there, some of it that I didn't even know. And I suggested to the external affairs committee that we asked Carl Schweng, Audrey Vance, Arlene, and John Domber to attend, and I volunteered the, our dining room, because it, Hunter's Ridge doesn't have the space to do that, because of their construction. And I called Carl, and he got back to me ASAP, and it was set up, and that's what happened. And there was no one excluded, because there were people from Palmir, there was, I saw a couple people from Palmir, from, obviously Worthington, but the bulk of the people that were there were from Hunter's Ridge. And they were just looking for an explanation, an explanation that, the timeline, which I didn't know about, you know, October 1st and October the 8th personally, but Carl gave that information in straightforward message to the people who were there, and I learned some stuff, too, because he did a PowerPoint presentation, which is, this is one of the, what the sheets look like, and I thought that was helpful to all the people, all the people that were there. And of course, there were many, many questions, and I thought it was productive, whether, you know, I know you weren't there, Steve. I know Ben wasn't there, and Steve wasn't there, but there was no, there was no, oh gosh, forgot Rick.
Okay.
But anyway, there was no reason why you could not have come. As a matter of fact, I had the opportunity to see your daughter, say hello, because I hadn't seen her since Meteira. So how long it's been? It's a while.
My point's not that it wasn't productive, it was, apparently, productive.
Yeah, well, the point is, I was the one that instantly, well, was requested by the external affairs for me to make the contacts, and I did.
And that's fine, and that's good. I think you should have, that's not my point. My point is, if we're going to have a unified front, then we need to all know what's going on.
And we need to know, but here's another point. Maybe the information that the staff got on October the 1st or the 8th could have been in some fashion given to us in an email, or something to tell us, "Hey, there's something going to be happening." Because I don't like to be, I personally don't like to have someone tell me something that I think I should have already known, and of course, I didn't find out till October 20th in detail, and so, that's the way it is. I happen to think that process has to change. I think we have to give more information out to all the council people within the first 10 hours or 12 hours, but that's my personal view, and
Well, why don't we agree to do this? I mean, I think when it comes to items like this, that are this important, you know, a heads-up from your fellow councilperson, or from staff members, or something like this, it's a little awkward for staff members, because they're being invited to a gated community, so they can't really invite other people there, unless who's ever in charge of organizing it says, you know, "Hey, you know, we'd like to invite city council members to be there," because it's important for everybody to hear that. So I would just ask in the future, if at all possible, unless people just don't want the entire city council here, the whole entire city council may be the ones involved, well, will be the ones involved in making some of these decisions, possibly. So it's probably good to have them there to hear it, so.
But the three of us, of course, we couldn't speak, we just listened.
And that would have been good, to, at least someone dared me to be there, anyway. That would have been good.
Because it was perception at that point, then, like everyone said.
Well, then, you know, and this has been a good discussion, but my recommendation would be that staff lets us know. I mean, we can call each other, but then that looks a little, you know, sunshine law-ish itself.
Okay. First off, I had no contact with the Hunter's Ridge folks at all. My only contact was Councilmember Longcard. It was made very clear to me, not by him, but by other sources, that this was by invitation-only meeting, all right? I did not feel that it was my place to be inviting people. I figured whoever was doing the inviting would do that, all right? So, and I was invited myself, because staff had to be there, so. I think it's very unfortunate, but that's how it went.
All right. Well, at least everybody knows that if we weren't there, it's because we weren't invited. And, okay, and that's it. And it's no fault of your own there, so, or any of ours. So why don't we, for now, is everybody ready to just kind of move on? Because we're, I bet we're going to have a lot of time in the future to talk about this, kind of, for a while. Janet, do you have anything else before we move on?
Well, kind of what's on my mind at the moment is that, and I just want to, I'm going to vent right here, is that
Okay.
You all know, you're getting lots of emails. I don't appreciate chain emails, I really don't. Some of them aren't even signed. You know, if you're going to say something, take the time to write out your own thoughts on how you feel about something, rather than just forwarding on something that says on the top even, "Forward, sample email." So if you really feel strong about it, tell me how you really feel, rather than sending me something that you just signed on the bottom, that I don't really believe that at some cases, that people know what they're really signing off on. It's just because their friend sent it to them and says, "Send us to Janet." Well, then it gets passed on, and some of them even had "Forward, Forward, Forward, Forward" all over it. And take some time, write your thoughts. Tell me what you really think. And I'm also kind of getting a little ticked at being accused of not being a fit leader, because I'm not taking out thought process here for our taxpayers. Well, sorry, there's a whole nother boat of taxpayers that have children, that live in this community, that want a school, and you know what? We have to take their consideration, too. So I don't want to be accused of being an unfit leader, because I'm supposedly only thinking about one segment of the population. Our job as a leader is to think of everybody and everybody's needs, and I just needed to vent. Sorry, thank you.
No, I apologize. That's why you put a microphone in front of you.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, anyone else before we carry on here? How about you, Steve, you want to vent? No, I'm talking to you, buddy.
No. I want to move on.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much for everybody's comments, and we will sort through this, as usual. Okay, here we go. First reading, Audrey, number nine.
Thank you. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Benita Grand Properties LP to amend Lee County zoning resolution number 98071, as subsequently amended, to extend the termination date of mining from May 27, 2020, to May 27, 2030, on land located at 25501 Benita Grand Drive, Benita Springs, Florida 34135, on 1,268 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading of the ordinance. The second reading and actual public hearing and zoning case will be addressed on Monday, November 16, 2015, starting at 9:00 AM in these chambers.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send this, send this on, the second reading?
Yes, make the motion.
That we have the hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, motion, is there a second?
They get to have a hearing.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Longcard?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Steve McIntosh?
Councilman McIntosh?
Councilman McIntosh is not in the room?
The men's room.
Would you explain a little bit about
Here he is. Yes, counsel, first of all
Due process?
Yes.
He's right here.
We need a vote.
Was it, aye?
Thank you.
Okay. Never mind. Remind us about due process, anyway. It's always good to get a reminder.
Right. At this point, we have an application pending. The application was heard by the zoning board. It is that they provide a recommendation. City council is required to have a second hearing. This is a formality or ministerial action of going forward. It would not be indicative of your, I mean, well, the roll call will register your votes. It's not indicative of your final opinion as to the particular case, but if you had a denial of a case, it would create or pose additional problems. We do have to provide procedural due process.
Mainly because what we'd be doing by denying them this, we're not denying them other than, we're denying them due process. We're not denying the case, because we haven't heard the case yet.
Right.
We're just saying, we don't even want to hear your case.
Right.
Which is illegal.
Correct.
Okay. Just, second, second here, second reading, you want to vote it down? Vote it down. But anyway, it passed. There we have it. We are going to another first reading of the, of an ordinance on item 10.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending a portion of the This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, amending a portion of the administrative regulations guiding the personnel policies ordinance, amending section 7.02 relating to the compensation pay plan, providing for severability, conflicts of laws, scrivener's errors, and an effective date. This is a first reading. The second reading will be held on November 18, 2015 in these chambers, beginning at 9:00 AM. Meg Weiss is here if you have any questions, but it's a first reading without advertisement, no public comment.
Counsel, do you have any questions or would you like to move on to second reading?
I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
That, um, I have worked recently with Laura, recently with John Dahmer. Uh, matter of fact, John Dahmer came, came from Hunters Ridge at 5:30 Vanderbilt Lakes because we had a couple of issues over there. And, uh, you know, he didn't leave until 6:30, quarter to seven. So I have seen so much of these folks spending so many hours out there in the field. Um, and they don't have the option to get a straight pay. Right now, it is strictly time off. At least now they have an option to be able to do that and I would support that. So I'll move into the second reading.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second, any other discussion? Roll call, thank you.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, next item.
Thank you. This is a first reading of the following ordinance. It's an ordinance authorizing Lee County to levy special assessments within city boundaries for municipal solid waste disposal pursuant to Florida statute section 125.01 subsection 1Q, providing for conflicts of law, severability, scrivener's errors, and effective date. This is a first reading. Uh, there is no public comment taken at this time. It is scheduled for November 18th for a second and final public, uh, hearing. If council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer those questions.
Any questions or would you like to move to second reading?
Move to second.
Have a motion and second, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Uh, that was confusing of me. Thank you very, thank you. You're welcome. Uh, roll call.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, Adam C.
Thank you. This is an ordinance amending Bonita Springs code chapter 42, article 3, water conservation to adopt appendix C, gray water recycling systems of the plumbing portion of the Florida Building Code to require new car washes to implement best management practices, to establish ornamental water fountain and water feature standards, and to encourage alternative water reuse technologies, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion, and code of effective date. This is a first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance will be scheduled for a second reading and public hearing on November 18, 2015. Um, at this time, no public comment is taken, but if you have any questions, Jennifer DeFaulhagen is here and is available to answer questions.
Hi, Jennifer.
Good evening. Um, just wanted to give you a snapshot of, excuse me, the proposed amendments to the water conservation ordinance. This covers four things. For the first, it is encouraging gray water use and rain harvesting. The second, it's providing standards for water recycling by adopting the Florida Building Plumbing Code appendix C for standards to review those rain harvesting and gray water use. It also is provided best, it's providing best management practices as already required by Florida state law for new, new car washes. And, um, finally, it is providing standards for ornamental water fountains features as provided by the EPA and requires permitting and design review. That is the meat of that proposed ordinance.
Thank you very much. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Second reading.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta? Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay, we are to number 11.
Thank you. This is another first reading, but this time it's a public hearing. It's been advertised as such because it's a land development code. I'll read the title block into the record. This is an amendment to the Bonita Springs Land Development Code, chapter 4 zoning, related to administrative setback variances and nonconformities created by eminent domain proceedings, amending sections 4-254 and section 4-2325, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion, and code of effective date. Um, I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, which is in, on file with the city clerk and it is legally sufficient. Um, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Uh, this is just trying to better, uh, the land development code for when we go through acquisition projects, uh, to make it so that the property owner, uh, to the extent possible, can keep his property whole by treating conforming lots of record as relatively automatic that you will receive those variances.
Yeah, for the benefit of the people's property, we take.
That's right.
Okay, cool. Uh, any questions before we go to public comment? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send it to second hearing?
Move to second hearing, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
As a motion and second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
And as usual, we are to the city attorney's report. What do you got for us?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to just, Jackie requested that I mention that we will have a comprehensive plan, uh, scheduled for November 18th for permit, um, I'm sorry, for a first reading. Normally, we do a permission to advertise, but because it's a transmittal hearing and to keep us on the correct schedule, you'll see it as a first reading or for first public hearing, uh, so that we can then transmit it to Department of Economic Opportunity as well as the LPA seeing it. And then in January, you'll have your final. It's a little bit different than your normal ordinances, so we just wanted to remind you that will be coming up and you won't see it, but we wanted to let you know about it.
So when you say consider a possible charter referendum, we don't know what it is.
That's the second thing. This is the Raptor Bay WCI. I'm just mentioning before I get to the other schedule, I was asked by Jackie to bring that issue up.
Okay.
Um, okay, possible charter amendment referendum issue. Counsel, every four years, you have a general election and during that general election, that's the time, uh, that referendums should be considered because it is a citywide election and that allows us to not have to pay the supervisor of election the cost of conducting an election, which in odd years is roughly $60,000. So, um, I believe the goal is to keep the prices down, so it was incumbent for me to remind you that it is time that if you did want to have a referendum, you could have it. Now, unfortunately, we don't have enough time for a charter review commission. I do want to point out there are three different ways that charter amendments can get on the ballot. One is by having a charter review commission. One is city council doing a direction, which if you decide to do so tonight, you certainly have the ability to do so. And the third way is by, uh, the residents deciding to petition the council to do so. And if that petition is sufficient, they can, they can certainly have it on there. Uh, the salary issue was something that was raised by Councilman Slacta a couple, about a month ago. Uh, we had discussed the issue and we also discussed that during the time, there has been significant changes. Now, let me just go a little charter history. When the city incorporated, there was no compensation at all. Uh, so city council did bring it to the voters, um, and, and the voters did approve, um, a compensation. I believe that was also one where there was a little bit of a time in between, uh, to start the compensation. At the time, the compensation set up an adjustment factor based on city employees. So that their ju- council adjustment would only occur based on city employees receiving a cost of living adjustment. What happened was, uh, cost of living adjustments, which were relatively routine in government, uh, went away. It were not the only government where it went away. Uh, there are other governments that now follow a pay-for-performance plan. At this point, you have, in other words, something that does look like you get a cost of living, but you end up not getting a cost of living. And as a result of that, that was a referendum issue that Councilman Slacta mentioned that he was interested in. And, um, that would be one that I could prepare in time, because remember, the supervisor of election also needs 60 days in order to hold the election. So it's not as if, um, or 60 days to get it ready for the ballot. Um, so that would make sense to do it during the general time. And discussing it with Councilman Slacta, and please tell me if I'm overstepping by talking about these points. You know, if you want to talk, feel free and I'll be happy.
Aw, that was nice.
Nice?
You're like an official.
You're such a sweetie pie.
I'm sorry.
She's giving you permission to talk.
Was, Councilman Slacta would be term limited in, uh, 2018 and he suggested starting it in 2018. So as far as the current impact to council, it would be under the current status quo. Um, so the only council members sitting would be whoever, if, if one of the council members becomes mayor?
You get it.
As well as Councilman Gibson, um, would basically be the only one in 2018.
Possibly, possibly.
That's kind of, yeah, and you would have two years out, so you could possibly rerun.
So anyway.
Okay, back to this. Um, so you have a couple of options if you decide to go forward, uh, to look at a referendum. Um, now, one of the cities I also looked at was Cape Coral, which had their election last night, so they just made some changes. Uh, you can go, um, based on, remove the colon its entirety and just have a flat number, go with a higher number and go flat, with a flat number. You could, uh, change the number again and you could add a cola and just have a different cost of living factor. You could even put a floor or a top on it so that it never goes too high or too low, depending on what you want or what you think the voters would want. Um, you also could set something forward, um, on a population scale and that's what's done by the Board of County Commissioners. Now, Cape Coral had that and Cape Coral just changed to a, um, I believe it's 32 and 30.
32 for them and mayor 37.
With a cost of living indicator. But there's an adjustment. That's the flat starting rate and then it goes up based on the cost of living. Um, you could do it based on population and, and that was a correct statement that was made that, that is based, that would give a perception of growth. So, I mean, if, if that doesn't appeal to you. And then Councilman Slacta also mentioned to me an effective date of April 1, 2018. That would be on the referendum question if council decided to go forward. You also have the option of, uh, any other issues that you want to take to the voters. I just don't know what issues you have in mind if you do.
Well, we got issues.
I can tell you which ones.
Nothing that the charter can help.
Yeah.
Uh, counsel, I think the, the first question we should probably ask ourselves is that, is do, do we feel is, I appreciate you bringing this up, uh, is, do you think that there's anything we need to fix? Obviously, there's not a, there, it doesn't work the way it was supposed to. It, it either needs to be changed or, or, or not. I mean, I guess you could, you could take it out of there, you could do something simple. What, what are your thoughts on this? Do you think, and they, and I think we need to look at it in, especially those of us who won't be here, look at it and as, for future councils, I mean, are they going to have to go ahead if, and, and do a pay raise every charter time or do you think there should be something going on or what? Go ahead.
Um, obviously, this will not be affecting me, but I can say from eight years now on council's experience that there are times when this is more than a full-time job, more than a full-time job and the responsibilities and the work that goes on behind the scenes, the meetings, the, you know, the, the pull on you. And if you're holding down another job, it could be really difficult to do. Um, so for a future council coming on board, I'd also like to see that maybe if it were a little bit of a higher pay scale, then this could be someone who might not otherwise be able to do it because of the time constraints, that maybe we could, you know, it, it would open up having the seat being taken by people whose passion is to serve their community, but they really need the income too. So, um, you know, you just don't want to always have, I think, a sitting council of retired folks either because that's not representative of your whole community. So it's, I'm interested in seeing how other folks up here feel, but I, I would be supportive of, of doing something.
And.
Go ahead, please.
I, I, the reason I brought it up was obviously not for me because I'm, I'm not interested in the salary increase, but knowing the day I started, the workload was not as great as it is right now. I mean, we're, we're getting more and more involved and, uh, and, and my district three is, is, as I said before, has always got an issue of some kind and it could be the church, it could be anywhere. So I, I, I brought this up for, not for me, but for future leaders that would be up here. And, uh, and I know all the other council people are very heavily involved too, so, um, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see this move forward.
Stop. Stevie, go ahead.
Man, uh, I think, well, make sure that people in the audience know, I think at least five of us up here out of the seven are, do have jobs or working, so it's, it's not like we're all retired. But, uh, this is a civic responsibility. There's just no question about it. And I think people take this role because it's civic responsibility. I certainly didn't take it expecting to make any money out of this thing and I probably spent more money than I, I should, but that's part of being, giving back the community. So I, as much as I understand where Stephen's heart is on this and where maybe the long-term prospects are that would change the, maybe the face of this, this board slightly, I, I don't think I could vote for it, Stephen, so.
Okay. Uh, anybody else want to chime in? No?
Um, well, I, it's, uh, you know, basically the same thing, you know, I ran as, you know, civic duty, you know, wasn't really, the, the money does help some and, because it is a big responsibility. It does take a lot, a lot of time, a lot more than initially I, I expected. Um, but I can't see giving myself more money, more taxpayer money for this, even though it may not go to me if I do not run again, but.
Mm-huh.
Um, I, I don't know, I just, I feel, you know, the money we do get is, is adequate. It helps offset, you know, I had to buy a lot of new clothes and stuff when I first got on, so, you know, it, it does help, but, uh.
Mayor didn't.
I never, I never have bought anything.
Um, but yeah, I, I can't, uh, I don't think we need to adjust it. I think it's fine the way it is.
Okay, all right. Uh, anybody else have anything to add? No? No? Uh, well, I, it doesn't look like there's, you know, is anybody want to make a motion? One where, you, you don't need to make a motion if you just don't want it to go anywhere, but, uh, is everybody okay?
I'll make a motion to move it forward.
You want to make a motion to, to move forward with?
The referendum.
The referendum.
With a, with a referendum.
Let the people decide.
Options.
But the, but, but we have to straighten out what that referendum will actually say, though.
Absolutely. It would have to be an ordinance. I would need direction from council as to what type of, what you want in the referendum.
Right, right. So, so right now, what you're doing is to, is to, uh, your motion would be to do a type of referendum to, you know, to, to increase the salaries in some manner, just to see if, if we get a consensus. Okay, is there a second? I'll, I'll second the motion just to get it on the table for you. Um, so there's motion and second, and this is just to, to start the process, to do some type of exploratory, to put something together for a charter referendum to, to increase the pay in the future for, for future councils and to be determined. So it's really loosey right now, so this is just to see if you, you have an appetite for it. Uh, any discussion before we do roll call? Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Longheart?[1499.21]
Councilman Longart.
No.
Councilman McIntosh.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
Hi.
Okay, that's a no.
No.
Okay, and thank you for bringing it up, thank you for bringing it up, Stephen, okay? Uh, let's see, let's go ahead and move on, what else you got for us, Audrey?
Uh, thank you, I have an ordinance in front of you, um, I'm requesting permission to advertise. This will be amending the land development code by chapters three and four to create a US 41 overlay district. Alexis Crespo is here to provide a presentation on the ordinance, uh, so that you can understand what staff is looking at going forward with.
Alexis, where you been?
Good, good evening, thank you very much, it's a pleasure to be back, Alexis Crespo representing staff. Did you say, how am I doing?
I said, where you been?
Oh, where have I been, I've been here, I've been around.
Oh, don't say that, go ahead.
Alright, well, I do just have a, a brief presentation this evening. As Audrey said, this is permission to advertise, so this is the first of, of hopefully many public hearings to address your US 41 corridor and creating enhanced standards for new US 41 or your main US 41 corridor. You do currently have enhanced standards in your codes for Benita Beach Road as well as old US 41. And so this would be simply adding a new overlay district into your land development code to address, uh, US 41, which is clearly a significant corridor within the city. So tonight, I just wanted to briefly revisit the vision that council set us upon in 2014 regarding their desire for enhanced standards along the corridor, discuss some of the design issues we're facing and trying to, um, address through the proposed amendments and then talk about next steps in timeline. So the vision that we were tasked with, um, again, dating back to 2014, is to really create a beautiful entry, entry into the city of Benita Springs, both coming from the north and coming from the south, as really this is your main, main gateway into the city for, in many ways. We want to make sure that there's a high quality, um, not only of new development, but also of redevelopment. As I'll show you, there's lots of opportunities for redevelopment, um, along that corridor. We want to emphasize place making so that you really feel like you're in Benita Springs. And as you pass through US 41, you have that sense of place that makes, um, Benita truly unique and different from Naples, different from Astero. Um, also looking at higher review standards for more intensive uses, you've had some of those come up in recent months. And we want to make sure you have a very clear process and a clear set of criteria to guide your decision-making when some of those uses come forward. And also, of course, address pedestrian and vehicular access along this arterial roadway. So we showed you these pictures back in 2014, and these are some of the, the sites that were developed before the standards that are even in place today. These are properties that we would think are ripe for redevelopment opportunities. We want to make sure we have the right standards in place so that when they do come forward with redevelopment, um, petitions to the, the city, that we have the standards in place to work with them and get them to a higher level of design quality. And some of the examples, you have lots of great examples in the city of, um, development that was put in place post 1998, when your current, um, commercial design standards were implemented. And when we looked at these photographs of Bonefish and John Woods and some of the other, um, newer commercial, we realized a lot of the, the things that make these developments beautiful were done by the developer, were not code requirements, and they went above and beyond the standards in place. And this is what we want to, um, be able to implement through these enhanced standards. We want to make it flexible, we want to have options for developers, but we want to make sure we're achieving a higher standard than just the status quo, um, of the unincorporated areas of the county. And then you have lots of vacant properties still along US 41 that we really want to target and make sure that as those new developments come online in this next growth cycle, um, again, that higher quality development is in place. I want to remind you, um, you won't see in this document that we're bringing forward anything to do with architecture or building design, working with the city architect, we brought forward, um, standards within the last nine months and to address higher commercial building design standards, so you have codified those. You've also addressed at length signage, as I'm sure council recalls, um, over the past year. And we also implemented big box or large-scale retail standards, so we did not have to address that in this, um, set of amendments since they were already accomplished recently. So what are the, some of the design issues we're trying to, um, uh, avoid and improve upon through the LDC amendments we're proposing? Um, this is a newer development in Lee County in the San Carlos area, and it's got that strip commercial feel where the buildings pushed back, um, and there's a lesser design quality. So we're looking at ways to accomplish the parking, accomplish all the things that the developer needs to make a successful, um, development, but at the same time, having a better relationship with US 41 and avoiding the strip commercial look. Also, code minimum right-of-way buffers, a lot of jurisdictions, um, in the area have taken it upon themselves to implement, um, higher standards for roadway buffers along key, um, corridors and arterials such as US 41. So this is an example of a code minimum fifteen-foot-wide type D landscape buffer. And we feel that along US 41 in Benita Springs, um, we can do a lot better than this and have, um, an enhanced view shed from the roadway. Service station buffers, um, you've noticed there's been a trend in, in automobile service stations to go to much larger canopies, larger stores, more fueling pumps. And so what we've looked at really citywide through this, um, proposed amendment process is an enhanced buffering to better screen the pumps in light of the change, um, in that industry where the, um, developments are getting much larger in scale. We also wanted to address drive-through visibility, this is a Lee County McDonald's, um, at Gladiolus and 41. Um, and the way the building is oriented, you can see all the drive-through queuing from, uh, US 41. And we certainly want to make sure that the codes are very clear, um, to avoid, uh, view sheds like that from the, the roadway. And I believe lastly is the orientation of service bays, this can deal with car washes, this can deal with auto service stations, um, really any use that has, um, service bays, we want to make sure, um, that those bays are oriented away from the street frontage. So we are, uh, bringing forward, uh, hopefully in the next coming meetings, a set of amendments to you to have a process and criteria to address intensive uses, uh, providing for you a set of, um, enhanced site design and development standards for projects along the US 41 corridor. Bring forward, uh, a US 41 unique, uh, landscape buffer requirement, um, again, to enhance, uh, view sheds along the roadway. And that the amendment package would also address better access and interconnectivity between projects and emphasize corner lots. So some of the, um, design solutions we're looking to implement through these amendments involve the concept of amenity zones or having, uh, beautiful features, um, near the project frontage, where you have to have water management in Florida, you have to have lake features. And if you're going to orient those towards your frontage, um, using things such as fountains can really beautify those spaces and make for really nice views from the roadways. And this is an example, um, from the Naples area. Looking at enhanced right-of-way buffers, a wider buffer width, better screening through the hedge requirements, a taller plant at installation and clustering of trees, um, to create, uh, better views. We've implemented an, a menu, a concept, um, through the, the draft amendment regarding your corner lots. This is your major intersections along US 41. And this is something that's been done very well in Sarasota area as well as Collier County, where this is Amokalee, um, and US 41. And they have, whether it be the principal building, whether it be an accessory structure such as this, this lattice feature with landscaping, a fountain, um, create different options for them to address these corner lots as, um, it creates a lot of design emphasis when you're at, um, those major intersections. And again, provides that sense of place where you, you immediately know where you are when you see those types of features. This is another example at Wiggins Pass in US 41, just south, um, of the city limits, where a fountain feature with some public seating was utilized to create emphasis on that corner. And then, of course, there's the option of orienting the building towards the corner, which is not always what the developer would like to do, hence, um, the desire to create a menu of options depending on their development program. Uh, in terms of citywide solutions, as we were going through this process, we realized we don't need to just address, um, drive-through service stations on US 41. This is important citywide to make sure that you have very high standards for certain, um, types of uses. So we would bring forward amendments regarding the orientation again of service bays so that they would be oriented toward the sides of the lots, not towards the roadway frontage, and would also be well-screened and architecturally, um, integrated into the principal structure, so not to be as, as obvious as some of the other existing developments. Uh, this is not a great example from a landscaping perspective, but what this photo, um, shows you is a very well-designed drive-through facility where the queuing is wrapping around the building and you're not seeing the cars lined up front or the call box up front, um, which can be, uh, less attractive than this design. And then, um, looking at enhanced service station, bu, service station buffering, um, this example includes some berming where there's some elevation of the, um, lot grade to create some additional visual screening. And you can see it really screens that first front row of cars, you can still very much tell this is a gas station, there's no question about the use. It's, it's not inhibiting the visibility of the use, but at the same time, providing some, some good screening for what is a 24-pump facility. And there's another example of berming and buffering to help, um, screen those fuel canopies. So to close out, um, just want to give you an idea of the process and timeline, should you, um, choose to proceed this evening, we're seeking your input night, tonight and permission to advertise. We would like to go to your local planning agency on November 12th, um, to run through the draft amendments with that group. And then we would be prepared to come back to you for first reading on November 18th and second reading on December 3rd. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, any questions for Alexis? No, okay.
Thank you.
Good, and so, uh, right now, what you're needing from us is to go ahead and, uh, to do a permission to advertise?
Yes, sir.
Move to, move to support the permission to advertise.
Is a motion to move to advertise, and is there a second? There's a second, any other discussion? Uh, nice job, Alexis, uh, roll call.
Councilman McIntosh.
Hi.
Councilwoman Martin.
Hi.
Councilman Slacta.
Hi.
Mayor Nelson.
Hi.
Councilman Simmons.
Hi.
Councilman Gibson.
Hi.
Councilman Longart.
Hi.
Okay, and let's see, you have anything else for us?
Uh, no, sir, just happy Veterans Day.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, city manager's report, hey.
Mr. Mayor.
How you doing?
Uh, I'm doing well, thank you, sir.
How's your week been?
It's been great.
Good deal.
Lot of, lot of stuff going on.
Liar, liar.
Lots of stuff going on, I got my picture in the paper, what can I say? It was below the fold though, it wasn't the centerfold, it was below the fold, so we're clear. Um, I, I have one item real quick that I wanted to mention, and that is that I, I did want to take this opportunity, and it's already been done some, but to thank the staff for a great Riverfest, they did a great job, they work hard. It was even mentioned that they sweat, and yes, they do, uh, they work hard. I tell you, um, Laura and her crew are great volunteers, um, our maintenance staff, I mean, they probably don't get enough kudos, could not do these city events without our maintenance staff and all the work that they do. So we very much appreciate them and we had a great event. We were concerned, of course, um, about, um, the condition of Old 41 and what that might mean. Uh, attendance may have been down just a tad, but we sold more rubber duckies than ever before. We actually had more kayak racers than ever before, uh, actually sold out of all the fish, sold out completely. Um, so I think we've had, uh, we had a great event, uh, despite the construction on Old 41. We look forward to other great events, and I can tell you that Laura's working very hard with all of the event organizers, to make sure that their events are, um, not impacted as much as possible, uh, by the construction of Old 41. So, and again, so thanks to all the staff, great job. Um, first thing we want to talk about on, that's actually on your agenda, um, is the water tower. And Nicole's going to talk to you about the condition and why we're asking for your consideration of this expenditure. Nicole?
Yep.
Hello?
Hello, Nicole Farino, Parks and Recreation Director. This has come forward, uh, to you for consideration because the water tower itself has deteriorated over time. Um, we have, for the last eight months, been trying, uh, to meet with different contractors, which we have, we've met on site, some have even gone on lifts to get inside of it and look at different, um, options of what we could do structurally for this tower, to maintain its historical integrity. Um, we did look at, uh, doing a preservation, that was foremost what we looked at. We didn't have anyone willing to completely historically reserve it because of how rotted away it was. The roof itself cannot be restored in any way, it does have to be ripped off and, and made new. And that is in the quote for the 8,078, it is split up into two different sections. The other 20,000 is to build a replica of the actual structures to make it look like it did before. So those are the different costs that you have, there is, it is not holding water because it does have holes in the sides and in the roof, so it's not possible for it to hold any water currently. It also, um, is a liability risk to the city because if we do have any sort of storm or wind, it could come flying off and onto users of the park, which we do not want to happen. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. We, it, it is up to you to decide if you would like to move forward with the only quote we have received. We had many different contractors look at it, no one was willing to give us a quote except the one company we did get, um, in that eight-month timeframe. Uh, so that's kind of where our cost is and where we're at on that. The next, sort of, step in the process is deciding, do we sink the money into it or do we tear it down? Because it does need that at this point.
Okay, uh, council, your thoughts? And, and just to clarify this before you start here, the $8,000, that's for just putting another roof on it?
Putting a new roof, yep.
And then the other, the other $20,000 is doing the walls?
Yes, and the floor.
Uh, there you have it, and, uh, we don't have a separate bid for just demolishing it, but it would be.
No, we don't, but that would be a lot less, most likely.
And if we're not careful and we put this off long enough, we won't have to do that, because it's just going to fall off, right?
Correct, it could happen, but that would also put us at a liability risk.
Just clean it up, yeah. Okay, council, what do you think? Yeah, Janet?
Okay, um, John Gucciardo, who is the staff liaison to the Historical Preservation Board, brought it up at their last meeting. And, um, there was a little bit of conversation about it. And obviously, the Historical Preservation Board takes the mission that they have to preserve our historical structures within the community very, very seriously. And their comments were that although it was a lot of money, they wanted to be assured that this wasn't just a Band-Aid that we were putting on it, that we were actually doing, um, something that would save it for upcoming years. And then there was talk about, but they did not get a chance, um, because they didn't have all the information at the time, at their meeting, to actually make a formal vote, but they did talk about, as Rick had mentioned earlier in public comment, that they do have a budget that they work with and that they might be interested in actually putting their money where the mouth is and, and helping to save this piece of Benita. So I'm sure they will discuss that at a, at a future meeting. But, um, I personally would add my support to that it is, it is a historic str, structure, it's part of our community. And, um, you know, and this kind of piggybacks on what I'm going to say next about the, uh, Dixie Moon. But, you know, after seeing Mr. Gibbs', um, market, downtown marketing plan and, you know, what he's done with other communities, historic structures are viable and, and they need to be saved. And, um, I'm just going to support that we do what we need to do to save this one.
Okay, but, uh, but the, the bids that we have here aren't saving it, they're, they're rebuilding it, tearing, taking it down, rebuilding it, right?
Basically.
Basically, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's just rebuilding, it says rebuilding the water tower walls and flooring and rebuilding the roof. That's to, tearing it down and building a, another water tower.
Pretty much.
And, uh, yeah, so the, the consensus that you've, have you got any other, oh, you didn't get any bids. The other contractors that looked at it, were they pretty much like, wow, there's nothing to rebuild here, it's rotten? Is that the consensus it's been from all the contractors that looked at it?
Yeah, I mean, what we went after first was try to preserve it structurally, how can we stabilize it? And that one, we got nothing from anyone, they just didn't think that was a good idea. So the one we did get said, you know, you probably should rebuild.
Right, and the construction, I mean, uh, that would help us out here to understand why you can't do that, because the construction, it's built like a barrel, that's what it is, it's just, it's just pieces of wood with steel wrapped around it. So once the, the wood is rotten, there's nothing to replace. Once you replace the wood, you've replaced the entire thing, right?
Correct.
That's what's going on, and the roof, I mean, it's the same, same thing, once you replace the roof, there's really nothing to restore, right?
No, there isn't.
So you can, we can either rebuild it or tear it down.
Mm-hmm, the only other option we also looked at was building one inside of the current one to try to keep the old wood in place. But that, that you couldn't affix it, it was too rod, rotted away to where if you, you would have to glue it or something, it just was not possible at this point.
Alright, council, what, how do you feel?
Yeah, I was going to say, and just, you know, I think to some old barns, you know, up north, what, what have you, you know, the, the wood looks horrible, but so does the roof. So I have seen them fix the roof and then just leave the wood.
We can.
The old wood.
Yeah, and that's why there are two separate quotes, but the problem is.
I just want to make, I just want to talk that out maybe a little bit further.
Sure.
If we replace the roof, we still, the roof won't be historical, but the wood will.
Correct, and you can do that, the only issue is the, the more it rots away, you're still going to have a new roof on a rotten structure.
Right.
So you're buying yourself some time before you would have to rebuild the bottom.
Which is less than perfect, but does hold the historical significance somewhat.
Sure.
Yeah. Would they be reu, reusing the metal straps that hold the barrel together?
Yes, they'll reuse anything that they can.
Cause I mean, even, you know, back in the day when this was built, they couldn't expect it to last forever. They knew that they were going to have to replace the wood because it's going to rot.
Right.
So I mean, I, I guess if, if we were maintaining the old metal that was holding it together, you know, it still has some.
Yeah, I mean, they can, they can reuse whatever is, what they're able to reuse.
So, so there you have it, I, I mean, I, I would be more prone to be along the lines of what Mike's talking about is, which, is, if there are things in it that you can use, and that's what you would do with a building.
Right.
If there were, if there was rotten lumber, you'd replace it, if there, the roof was rotten, you'd replace it. And, uh, if there are parts of it, whether it's the windows or, or parts of it that are, you would, you would, you would use those parts to do it. I mean, you're going to have to leave that up to the contractor, if there's things that they can put back on there, that's fine.
Right.
But then, the larger question is, do you want to stay and spend, is the water tower itself, is there $30,000 worth of value there for the water tower? And, I mean, I think maybe if you, and I'm not, I mean, if the council wants to do this, that's fine. But I think if you ask a lot of people around Benita Springs, the significant, historical significance of the water tower, they don't even know where it came from, what it used to be, what was the stor, I know. But, but, but I think the average person would be like, why are you doing this? I think it would be important for the historical site, and what you, I think you were suggesting, maybe they need to take another look at it, the Historical Preservation Board?
I'd like them to, to take another look at that, and, and if they come back, and I think we have maybe a little time,
if they, if you, they would come back and say, hey, this is the story, this is, this is why. I think they need to make, it just can't be, it's old, so we want, no, tell us what the historical significance of it is, where it came from, where it was brought from, why, why it's important to spend $30,000, I think that would be a good idea. I mean, what do you think?
Yeah, and maybe, could it be placed inside somewhere?
Well, yeah.
I don't, you know, I don't even know if it can be moved, but.
We actually built this structure, this really nice, heavy-duty concrete structure to actually put it on top of, that's why it was done.
Yeah.
I guess we should, and Rick's right, maybe we should have concentrated on, ah, what can we do to protect, you know, the actual tank itself a little bit better? But once it was up there, it's like, there it is, so, uh, bad on us. But, uh, I think maybe looking at it a little bit more, let, letting the Historical Preservation Board think about it some more, maybe giving us some back history on why, why the community should spend $30,000 on repair, replace, whatever. And, and then if they get a better understanding, because I think Alan made a pretty, uh, impassioned plea on just, just fixing it. But if they need to, if they had a better understanding of why that can't be done, I think it would be really helpful if we're all on the same page. Council, would that be okay? I don't, don't mean to punt here, but I think it's important we get a better understanding.
Also, the estimate's only good for another nine, 10 days, so.
Yeah, but I think that, that's something, we contractors, we do that to try to make you do it.
They give you 30 days.
Well, this guy might just say, oh, right, I'm, have second thoughts about the whole thing. People's counting down those minutes on that.
You never know, you never know.
Well, what do you think?
Well, I agree with you, at some point, this council will agree we have a historic strategy somewhere. We've looked at it before and turned it down apparently, but, but, you know, if you come forward, not only with what's great about the, the, the water tower, but if we could get a, a feeling of where the historic area will be in Old Benita, we've got so many things we want to save, we need to have a place and not have them spread all over unless you're going to have a walking tour, which is pretty doubtful. But I think this is an important piece of the history.
Yeah, we, we ran in the same thing when we, uh, redid the, the, the little cottages, we ran into a same kind of thing, which was, we, how much money do you want to invest in it, or, you know, in, in refurbishing this? And when does it cease to become the cottage? When you replace the walls and the inside and the roof and the door and the windows and, when is it not the cottage anymore? And when is it not the cottage anymore? What are you doing? And so, so anyway, I think that you'll get there on this too, so, anyway. I, I think if you could just bring us that information back, maybe it...
Absolutely.
When it's convenient and, and then talk to you, and you probably, at the same time, you probably want to have a chat with your contractor and say, hey, could you go ahead and extend this for another 15, 20 days? Or something like that, I'm sure he will.
Yeah, we've extended, yeah.
I'm sure he will.
Sure, we'll talk to them about it.
Council, is that okay?
You got it.
Okay, all right, thank you. What else you got for us?
Um, I wanted to talk about item B on the agenda, and that is to get some guidance from council with regards to the possible future use of the community hall property. And, and again, this can be high-level discussion tonight. We're not looking for definitive answers, we're looking for possibilities. And, and tied into that might well be a discussion that council member McIntosh mentioned, which is, you know, what do we do with historic structures that we want, that we want to save? And so perhaps that's all going to be discussed here this evening. Let me just start off by saying this, this is an aerial view of the, of the community hall site. You've got Old 41 right here. You've got the former church property right here. You've got the sheriff's substation here, the community hall that will soon be torn down. And then we've got what I call the south half of the community hall property, with the most notable feature being the banyan tree, which is right here. So in our discussions with Lee County, there, there's a couple of pressures on us right now that we're going to try to, try to address. Number one, in our discussions with Lee County about the possibility of placing the new county library actually right about here, our city architect, Sam Vincent, has laid out a wonderful vision of, of how the library could be tied not only to the community hall site with actually a view corridor of trees and, and paved, pavers, brick pavers here, but also, of course, that ties then across the street over here to Riverside Park. So he's got that vision of that. Now, I think we're like on the third yard line, all right, of, of, of getting this, a yes out of the council or the, the county for a library here. I think we're very close.
You're, you're not familiar with football at all, are you?
Well, this is, let me just say this, this is fourth and goal.
Okay, there you go.
Fourth and goal.
There you go, okay, better, better.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to say that, that we're in the, the red zone because that doesn't sound good.
Oh, you are, okay.
Inside the 20.
Because we're all about green now, right? So, anyway.
Nice comeback.
So, getting back to this, so, anyway. So, so the county now, in our discussions, has indicated that they understand that if a library gets located here on this site, that it will be a centerpiece, it will be an anchor to our new downtown. And that's something we have been trying to negotiate with them for a long time. And I think, I think they understand that. Now, what they're interested in, and understandably so, is what is the city likely to do? If, if, and I, let me just tell you right now that obviously, nothing's expected to happen to the banyan tree. It's possible in our discussions with the county that this portion of the property, so a quarter of this property, may be reserved under an agreement yet, yet to be even written up, but for additional open space for the library or for additional parking for the library, especially if it gets expanded years from now. So without looking too much at the south part of the site, the question is, what does the council realistically believe could be the range of uses you would like to see on the north half of the property? Now, we, again, this, this structure will come down. We anticipate, no offense, deputies in attendance, this structure will eventually come down. They'll be here for a while, but eventually this structure will come down as well. So the county's interested in, you know, what, what is going to be the view towards the library across this piece of the northern part of the property? Obviously, we're going to be, if the, if there, if the council agrees with the vision to even have the view corridor here, which would be, I think, a beautiful thing, terminating in the front of the library, the question is, what do you see this property being used for? Now, just to add on now to the historic part of this, and that is that, as councils are aware, the Dixie Moon, which is on the back wall of the council chambers, has continued to fall into disrepair. It has had multiple tenants over the years that have been relatively unsuccessful. And now we have a developer who wants to build a significant development on that property and farther back. And that developer has offered to actually move the Dixie Moon structure, all right? And as you're also probably aware, the original building was, was much smaller than the one you see now. The other one, the, the one you see now has been added on to year after year. So I think the historical society sees that structure as important historically. You've, you've heard about that from Charlie Strater tonight, as well as in an email. And Rhonda also agrees with this. I've also talked to Gary Price, who's involved in trying to figure out what to do with structures like this. And they have thought about the possibility of actually having the developer move the building to the property that's owned by the historical society, where the McSwain House is being renovated up front, and to move it back there. Their concern, frankly, is that the McSwain House is slow in coming along. It's an issue of funding. They are concerned that given the amounts of money that they still need to complete the McSwain House, that also taking on the Dixie Moon property at this time, moving it on to their site, would not look good for the society or for the city, all right? So then the question is, does it make sense to look at opportunities to move the Dixie Moon building on to a portion of this site, perhaps up north? So it's facing on 41? Or as an alternative, and I know I'm getting away from the community hall property, but since we're talking about, okay, I want to advance here to another picture. There you go, thank you. Or look at the potential that the building would be moved and situated on the lemon tree lot. Now, I know that there's been talks in the past about trying to expand Riverside Park southward. You do have a property here that's not likely to be purchased anytime soon. So you'd be looking at, any expansion would take in this piece of property only. The question is, would you think it would make sense to put that proper, that building properly situated somewhere on this property? All right, instead of up here? I know there's been talk, especially since Bob Gibbs has been here, that perhaps there could be an open market here. Again, the county's kind of wanting to see what the thoughts are of, of the city about this space. And then, of course, when you tie in the Dixie Moon discussion, you know, does it make sense here? I will tell you that Sam Vincent, our city architect, does not believe that the, that the community hall site is the place for the Dixie Moon, if you, if, if you're involved in that. So he believes the vision is different for that particular piece of property, but he does believe it could work here, all right? Now, if, if the council were interested in having the Dixie Moon moved to a piece of city property, obviously, we would hope we could only have to move it once, if you move it. But then the question is, well, what use might you see for that property? Is that, or for that piece of, for that structure? Would it be something commercially? Would it be a, would it be a, a little restaurant? Could it be just a meeting hall? Could it be a, a, just public restrooms? I mean, there's all, there's a whole variety of uses. And I know I'm just kind of throwing this out tonight, but really, just looking for some general discussion about all of this and what the council sees as the opportunities with regards to the community hall site as well as the Dixie Moon. Now, if the council were interested in saving the Dixie Moon, like I said, the developer's willing to move it. He has a certain number in his head as to how much he's willing to spend to do that. But he is willing to move a certain portion of the structure. He's also willing to build a pad on which to place it. Depending on what we would like to see that future use of that building be, would determine whether or not it needs to have roughed-in plumbing before they complete out the slab. So I'm throwing a lot at, at you, but again, there's a couple of reasons. The county, the library, and then also the potential move of the Dixie Moon that at least we should probably discuss this a little bit and get guidance from council. So having blurted all that out to you, I'm just wondering if there's any response from council.
You don't have the Sam Vincent drawing of what he had, we had shown to the county?
I, I have it, but I do not have it down here, and I don't have it on there.
All right.
Right.
Because I think that that would be helpful. I'm going to go and just blurt this out here. I, I, after seeing what Sam had drawn with a promenade going down the middle right next to that, and with there being all kinds of nice open space and landscape and walking room where you could do the farmer's market or something, or, or whether it's a, periodically have food vendors and stuff there. I, I, I don't think that the, the banyan tree property there would be suitable for that. I, I have to, after thinking about it for a while, I, I tend to agree with Sam that it would actually be a hindrance. It would actually be blocking off that, that kind of view corridor and their, and future uses. And I, I think that, I think it's worthy of saving, I mean, in, in someplace. And I would love to see it be a little, a little restaurant or something like that. Very small restaurant is what it's going to be. But at that particular piece of property, I, I don't, I think it would kind of interfere with that larger plan. But I don't know, council, I mean, I mean, this is kind of hard to kind of just throw right at you like this.
Yeah, I think we need to talk a little bit, or see a little more about it. But when they talk about moving the, the structure, are they talking about moving the facade or the entire building?
They, they will move, my understanding is they'll move the entire building, but it's probably going to be the original part of the building, not the add-ons.
Visualize it on the inside. The entire building would actually be, when, when you're sitting in there and there's the little bar and then the part that goes into the kitchen isn't part of the building.
Right.
It's just that very, it's very small. I mean, if you, that very front part that you sit in, and it really doesn't even include some of the outside, the, the overhang part there.
I would think, you're either a construction guy, but I would think if we're going to move this thing and we have the potential of, of having people in there, we need to rough in the plumbing just to make sure that we don't have to go and cut the concrete later and put in plumbing to, to handle it.
Well, and it just all depends on, on what people's vision or what you may want to do, do with it. I mean, it, it's sufficiently more complex. It's really hard to make a decision about where you want to move it and stuff like that. I mean, I know we don't want to move it temporarily, but, you know, sitting up here trying to make a decision, okay, let's do that with it right now, I don't...
Well, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
Oh, I know.
I'm just introducing the topic.
I think the most important thing is, is to decide, because we need to get this library thing going on, is whether or not council wants, thinks that that site would be good for putting a building on or not. And I think that will help you out a lot in your negotiations.
With the county, it would certainly, yes, that would help.
And if you can either, you know, preclude that, or do, you want to put it there or you not want to put it there?
Well, do you need a motion or you just want to...
I think, I would think that if you either want to put that on the table or take it off the table, it would help Carl immensely.
I would suggest we do not put the, the moved building, the Dixie Moon, or whatever we're going to call this thing, in front of the library. I think Sam's got the right idea. It's a separate location, and I go back to the whole issue of we don't have a historic strategy for downtown, but we, we need to get that building saved.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think that would help, help Carl out immensely with his negotiations with the county there and, and would allow Sam some, some flexibility for making that a people's space there.
Janet's got it.
Yes, yes, Janet.
Well, absolutely, you know, I'm in favor of saving the building. The idea of putting it on the Old Lemon Tree Lot, which is our downtown farmer's market lot, and having started the downtown farmer's market, I have to ask the question that we will then find a place for the market to move to? Or as we talked about, that corner being more set up like a public market, an open-air public market? Is that what we're foreseeing then on the banyan, on, in front of the community hall?
We honestly haven't, haven't gone that far. I mean, now, I think, and the city attorney can address this more, but, you know, we do have some use restrictions on the community hall site with the county. And Audrey, you want to briefly kind of go through that?
Absolutely. When the county transferred the land to us, they did so by county deed in 2001, and that deed has a reverter clause. So with the reverter clause and, for council's edification or public's edification, a reverter's clause means if we don't use it the way the county put in the condition, then it goes back to the county. The land transfers back automatically. And usually, that would result in a court case and a court fight to get the land back if we did not agree to everything. The reverter says specifically that the subject's property, which is the community hall parcel, all of Block 20, may only be used to support public purposes, i.e. recreational uses and community support uses. If the subject property is used to support any use other than a public purpose, then the property will revert back to Lee County. Now, what is a public purpose and what is, I mean, recreational is easy, community support. But when, and the concern I had with the Dixie Moon property being located there, when everybody says, oh, that'd be a cute restaurant, would that be a question whether that's a public support purpose? I will say that when Lee County transferred the property to us, there was a little hot dog kiosk on the site where the, the sculpture is now. I don't know if you remember it being there, but there was a slight little place to buy hot dogs.
Field welcome center.
A welcome center, well, that was the original.
Chamber of Commerce.
Yep.
All right, that was before me.
Okay, well, well, with that being said, that kind of, I think that kind of settles that, right? Maybe?
Yep.
So if we, so if we were to answer the question to the county, that it will remain in public use, so we can control it?
Right.
That it would be a people's space? I think they're worried about us authorizing or constructing a structure that would detract from the use or the, the looks of the library. I don't know what we can say about that, but...
Well, could, could, council, could we go ahead and have Sam Vincent or somebody, I don't care who it really does, draw up some ideas on how, how we could make that, that space, you know, a, a nice public space and to where it could be a multi-use space? So during an event, we could, people could put booths there or maybe, I mean, I'm just spitballing her, or, or the people, the vendors could be put along there because I think we need to have something. And, and plus, I, I think, I think there's a lot of possibilities there for making that to where it's, it's complimentary to the library and the others things. So would that, would that be possible to bring that back to us?
Sure, I mean, is everybody comfortable with that? That it would be a, a public space and you put up temporary booths and those kinds of things? I'm not hearing that council's considering construction of any kind of structure there.
Yeah.
Am I reading you all correctly there?
Yeah, I don't know what that would be, so, anyway.
All right, that would be very helpful. And if you just want to think about the Dixie Moon, there's still some more time. And we can try to, first off, I will bring back the drawings of the library that were, Sam has done an awesome job in drawing up the proposals as well as, as well as owning the conversations with the county. He, he, he really has commanded their respect on this issue, and we appreciate his, his help with this. But we'll, we'll talk more about the Dixie Moon, perhaps we'll try to bring forward additional information, and you all will have a chance to, to think about it some more. We do have some time on the Dixie Moon, not a lot, but we, we do probably by early next year, we're going to have to tell them what, what needs to happen with that structure, so. And we would like to save it. I'm, I'm hearing everybody wants to save the building, correct?
Sure.
Correct.
Some portion of, okay. Thank you very much, that's all, that's all I needed on this one.
Okay.
John, you got anything else? Oh, John's got something.
Hey, John.
Just two minor updates. One, during the budget cycle, we indicated to council that we were going to go ahead with the...
the request for proposals on additional water monitoring. That was one of the recommendations that came out of the task force, and that we tried to time that so that as soon as the budget for this fiscal year was in place, we'd be ready to go forward. So, I'm happy to report back that that RFP hit the streets. We do have four responses, so the selection committee will be going through that and bringing recommendations back to council probably at your next meeting or the December meeting. So, that's moving along exactly as we thought the timing would work. The second thing I wanted to mention was that earlier in the meeting today, you heard from a resident about the lack of a posting of tonight's agenda and packet on the website. Not so much. It, he's absolutely right. It wasn't in the place where it usually was. We did have a little technical glitch in our posting. It was posted, just not where you would normally, or where people would normally expect to look at it. We've taken care of that internally, won't happen again. So, it was up there, just not where we would usually look for it.
Well, good. Thank you very much. Okay, mayor and council items, uh, let's see, what should we do here? Steve, do you have anything?
Yeah, just very quickly, again, Veterans Day, 11/11 at 11 o'clock, and that's all I got, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Pete?
Yeah, reemphasize, obviously Veterans Day, planning on being there. Thank you for all your continued work there, and there is an event at Bonita Bay later in the day, in the afternoon as well, right? That's 2:00?
2:00, Bonita Bay, that's, yeah, they're gonna have Dakota Meyer, who's our guest speaker, will be there.
Right, right.
And another thing.
Right, absolutely. And, you know, I think a lot of us here have met with various Lee County officials. I met with, and I think a lot of us did, the staff up there, Doc, well, Dr. Atkins, Reggie Snell, and Mark Mora. And, you know, they're committed to working with us, so let's work with them. I mean, you know, everybody's committed to working, let's get a resolution that everybody can be happy with, or at least the vast majority of people can be happy with. So, you know, I, I just, you know, it's me kicking tires. I asked them up there, what about the old 41 site? And just, you know, just brainstorming, and they said because of the railroad tracks, that they still consider active railroad tracks, that, that's not, that could not be considered. So, lo and behold, I called the railroad people. They said, yes, they are still active tracks, but they cited numerous examples around the state of where schools back up to railroad tracks. I say back up, I don't know what that would, would look like there. And they put up walls. So, I mean, let's everybody keep their minds open here to finding a spot. I think everybody's mind is open to finding a spot, but let's, I just encourage everyone, let's keep doing that, because we're not, we're not gonna kick this can down the road. This is our high school. We are gonna have a high school, now let's find a place to put it. So, I just encourage everybody to keep their mind open there. River Fest, big success. Fish Fry was fabulous. I did get a call about a week or so ago, Carl, thank you for your help with this. In fact, Bennett, it was from the gentleman that runs the Survey Cafe now. They were concerned that there were some banyan trees across the street there that were gonna get removed. They actually come to find out were Cuban laurels, and, which is an invasive exotic, as we all know, so they were gonna be removed whether there was road construction or not. I actually heard from a decent amount of people on that, so Carl, thank you with your help on that. Congratulations to all the area high school teams that made the football playoffs. Have to brag here just a little bit, our son, Petey, is in seventh grade, he is in Pop Warner. They won the Southwest Florida Peace River Conference Championship game, and they're heading up north of Orlando this Saturday, as is all the Simmons family, so let's wish our young Benetians on that football team best of luck.
Thank you very much, Pete. Janet, what do you have for us?
Well, as Kathy mentioned, the film festival tomorrow night at our very own cinema here in Bonita Springs, The Prado, at 6:00 PM, and I'm thrilled to say that we had 33 entries, so last year was 19, so we really grew that event, so that's pretty awesome. I want to thank community development staff member Jen Hagan for coming over to the Wonder Gardens today and doing a presentation on the backyard hen program. That went really well. And then I just wanted to thank also city staff member Karen Davis, because she has done a lot of help, or done a lot for the film festival, so I just wanted to say I really appreciated that she's done all that, so thank you.
Okay, and Mike?
Well, I just want to say thanks to everybody up here for allowing Bonita Prep and Fitness to have their holiday concert in the park. And I'll see everybody at the movies tomorrow.
Cool. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, Halloween downtown was a success. I hate thinking about dressing up and going down there, but when you see the kids walking through, it's, it's well worth it, and...
You enjoyed it, Dr. Steve.
Well, I, I was a magician this year, so, yeah, yeah. But anyway, the, the, and part of that Halloween Day was ghosts in the Wonder Garden, thanks to Councilwoman Martin. And I'm so glad I went down there and took a look, because it was the first time I'd seen the fence down on the Imperial River at the Wonder Gardens. It's, it's a marvelous piece of property, and now that we have a look at the river as well, those of you who haven't been to the Wonder Gardens need to stop out, take a look. And there was also, I'll give credit back to Councilwoman Martin again, there was an art, an editorial in the paper today supporting the city's decision to fund the foundation at the Wonder Gardens in that, in purchasing that piece of property by the same editor who had been against it when it first happened. So, he apparently had come out, and not to take your thunder, but he'd come out and taken a look at the property and what was going on with that property, and said, this is the right thing to do. So, congratulations to the Wonder Gardens Foundation, and clearly to this, to the city staff for leading us and us making that final decision. And finally, thanks to John Pano, the Historic Society, Charlie Strater, for the first Pirates Ball ever, and we'll see everyone at the Film Festival tomorrow night.
Good deal. Yeah, go ahead.
To me, the one important thing that I wanted to say, because we were talking about historical preservation tonight, and I wanted to say, to bring council up to date and make a report on that, is that I wanted to let you know what the numbers were, because you had graciously allowed us to continue the historical preservation grant funding program this year, so I wanted to let you know that from what had happened with it last year. And so, by the time we got it all written and all the rules and regulations out, the actual program was in effect from February through basically August, because they had to have the work done before our, our budget cycle ended, ended. But there were three properties that took advantage of it to a tune of $40,000, so it was very successful to see that, you know, that this was done with a lot of care and a lot of thought by this board. They take it very seriously, and believe me, they've had to make some really tough decisions to say no to some people that they really didn't want to say no to, but they're taking, passing out this money very seriously, so I just wanted you guys all to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Ben. Audrey, thank you, with Frank Cassidy on the situation out in Citrus Park with the large sweets, sweet, let's see, Swift, whatever they are, they sweep the streets. In front, and then a beautiful house, and that's what, what's there. I know you're still working on it, but unbelievable what we, what we see. And also, see y'all on the 11th.
Thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead.
Seeing how everybody's talking about the Film Festival, I'll just put in a shameless plug for my son and his friend Jake, and the filming was done by our daughter Elizabeth and Mrs. Simmons, so there will be a...
Ooh, I'm sorry, they're not eligible. I just made it up. Like the rest of the stuff I make. Yeah, I don't have anything other than to this, I know everybody's pretty made up emotionally with the, the whole high school thing, one way or the other. I've been very passionate about it, I think unabashedly passionate about it, maybe bashidly. But I have, I, I have to just, just implore to the community, we are a, a city, third biggest city in Lee Collier, Charlotte. We, we should have a high school here, but I have to tell you, that school board, just schools district staff and our staff, they're doing an amazing job. They did, I just saw, Mark Moore did the, the same presentation today over at the, the Chamber Government Affairs Committee as he did for the, the school board. They did an incredible amount of work in a short amount of time, really looked at things, really methodical. They have a great, methodical system going on, and given the criteria that we have set, given the bar that we have set, they have done a spectacular job. I would just ask for everybody's patience, but I have to tell you, in my opinion, if we lose a high school and it goes someplace else, it will because of us, not because of the school board. So, everybody keep that in mind, let's keep our eye on the prize. And with that, let's go to approval of minutes, would you like to do that?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sock?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moncar?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And once again, we are to public comment. Any member of the public wishing you speak at this time, please come forward.
For the record, Fred Forbes. There is a meeting this Monday night at 5:00. It was going to be at Quail West, and they have a room that would at least hold 350. It's more than likely gonna be at another location. I'll see to it that you all are invited, number one. Number two, the city does have to say on the right-of-way, but the right-of-way is not the whole issue. First of all, the school does not transport kids within a two-mile radius. They can't change that policy for Bonita. They should, because if it goes where it's gonna go, you're gonna have a lot of kids biking and riding, because in that two-mile radius, there's a whole lot of homes, they either have one car that's used by the breadwinner, or they have no car. So, they're gonna be walking, and they're gonna be riding bikes on that great bicycle-friendly, pedestrian-friendly stretch of road called Bonita Springs, right across through the under, the overpass. They're gonna be cell-phoning, they're gonna be texting on their smartphones. There will be a lot of kids in accidents. A member of this council wrote me a letter one time and said, may the death and the injuries of people at a certain location be on my conscience. If that school goes there, it ought to be on a lot of people's conscience. Should not happen. Secondly, if a high school with a stadium was smack up against Pelican Landing, Bonita Bay, Highland Woods, Vanish Wells, any of these places, you would have the same reaction. It's an established community. It's also gonna impact the public shopping. I'm standing here representing tonight Worthington and Palmira, I'm not, Worthington and Quail West. Quail West is actually as upset as we are. Worthington, sometimes I think they're more upset. So, I would say that we're, we're very concerned about this, but don't think that it's just because that we don't want it in our backyard. We don't want something in our backyard that's that close with that much noise. We have an outdoor lifestyle here. We won't be able to have parties in the Lenys outside. We have our parties on Friday night outside, the clubhouse, they'll be drowned out during football season by the band, the P.A. system and all that. I love football, and, and I am encouraged to think that we have Councilman Simmons that already, long ago, was working to see something happen. I'm glad to hear that McIntosh is in the game. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Rick Steinmeier. When I first read about this Hunters Ridge location, I said, ah, that's Lee County School District, they know what they're doing. They're gonna end up on the Tower Road site where they wanted to be 20 years ago. So, let's consider that, and then put it out there where there's no, nobody around that Tower Road site right now. Of course, Dennis Gilkey wants to develop right around that school that's not there yet, so that might end up being where we're gonna go, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time?
My name is Paul Shaw. I'm a resident of Hunters Ridge. I was at the presentation yesterday. It was a good presentation, except that it was in balance. It did not point out the impact that it had on the communities in the area. It was very favorable to the school, but it failed to point out all the deficiencies and issues, that the people who are resident in the three major communities, Hunters Ridge, Worthington, and Quail West, there's a very significant damage to these areas. One is the traffic, as you all heard. One is the light pollution, and one is the noise. These are very serious problems. When we moved and bought into this area, it was a very peaceful and quiet area, and very supportive to the seniors. We felt safe, we were comfortable. It was a good quality of life. What the school is doing by proposing a high school in this area will change that. We don't want it to change. We like where we are, we feel very safe. When we go shopping, we don't have to worry about crowds of teenagers. They tend, they're not criticizing teenagers, I had teenagers, but they tend to be boisterous, they tend to be noisy, and sometimes a little pushy when they have large groups. Do you people enjoy going shopping where there's a lot of teenagers? You got liquor stores there, and you have stores which sell liquor and cigarettes right in the vicinity. My understanding is that they have to be 500 feet away. You can't locate a store in a school, near a school, unless that distance is followed. But you're allowed to put a school into this vicinity even though you breach that distance. To me, I don't understand that. It seems like it's incompatible. Maybe somebody can explain that to me. I, for one, do not want the school there. I'm not against schools, but I don't believe that's the appropriate area. People in my community and the other communities feel safe and they like their quality of life. They don't want their assets affected, property values affected. We're at a point in our life where we cannot recover what we lose. The monies that we have invested in these properties are very important. Of course, at some point in our life, being realistic, we're not gonna be able to live there, and we're gonna have to go to some other place. And we're gonna need that money to support us in these other places, to give us the comfort, the quality of care that we'll need. We don't want to lose that. Quite frankly, I dread going on Medicaid. I don't want to have to feel that I have to go there because my assets have been depreciated, and I no longer have the money to afford the care that I need. In my mind, I, I'm not sure what this blinking light means, sir.
It means you're almost out of time.
Okay, thank you. In my mind, I almost fantasize an advertisement that says, buy in Naples, buy in Estero, don't buy in Bonita Springs. It is not senior-friendly, it does not protect its seniors. I hope that's not, does not come to pass.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
I have no vested interest in where the high school goes. I have a vested interest in making sure there's a high school, and I can promise you that I will not be alone in holding every single person on this board accountable if we let it fall off. Thank you.
Very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
My name is Jane Shaw, and I want you to be aware that when I first heard about the high school, my first instincts were, how could they place it next to I-75 and Bonita Beach Road? It was unsafe for our children. We have two entrances, we have two exits at exit 116 and Bonita Beach Road that they have to cross over. First of all, it's dark in the morning. If you see when sun rises, tomorrow it's going to be 6:37. The children that will have to walk to these schools where they say that they start classes between 6:45 and 7:00, will have to leave their homes well in advance in the dark and cross over these main thoroughfares. These are places where we have made, you cannot, when you are going northbound on I-75 and getting off at 116, you cannot make a right turn on red. It's one of the few locations that you can't make a right turn on red. Why? Because of the visibility. It is a dangerous intersection. As early, as recently as September 2015, there was a very serious accident. The traffic backed up for miles on I-75. It was at the intersection of Bonita Beach Road and I-75. It was at the intersection of Bonita Beach Road and I-75. There are statistics out there that say that out of all the pedestrian fatalities, over 50% of the fatalities are for the ages of 16 through 19. I don't know anybody on this board that wants to go up to the parent that has lost a child and say, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I voted that way. And really, you have to really think about the safety of the children, because I spent days, I have been working on looking at where Florida stands in site selection. They, they're concerned about health and obesity, they want children to walk, they want it to be on safe roads, not where they're in major harm's way. I really urge you to think about it. I also want a high school, I think it's wonderful, but make it safe for the children besides all the other things you hear. There's nothing worse than losing a child, and I personally know that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else at this time, please come forward?
Ben Herssonson for the, Ben Herssonson for the record, I know it's late, and I think what I learned tonight is, be on the shadow of any doubt. In fact, you can, you can carve it in stone, the residents of Worthington, Quest, and Hunters Ridge don't want the high school there. That's clearly established, folks. You board members and the, and the people sitting behind me and people listening, watching, for heaven's sakes, help the city council members, help the school board. We all know what you're against, well, come up with alternatives, make it work. I think the message of being negative about a particular location has been absolutely set in stone, we get it. I get it as, as a, as a citizen of this city. So I'm saying again, please, for those of you who are against it, why not look at this meeting you're coming up? Why don't you start suggesting alternatives to help these people make the decision that's going to be best for our kids and best for this city? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ben. Anyone else this time? Okay, thank you very much, everyone, meeting's adjourned.